Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Shucklin.
Chair, please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All right, item number one on today's agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will begin today with Supervisor Valero.
All right, thank you. Great day to Tulare County. Before I begin my board matters, I'd like to take this time to recognize someone whose pursuit of justice has impacted a nation, a former Cornelian, if I might add. Regardless of one's political leanings and aisles, people of both parties share their thoughts on Ginsburg's relentless call for equity, a woman who paved the way for others, who shattered the glass ceiling. For example, Republican Senator Orrin Hatch of Utah had suggested Ruth Bader Ginsburg to Clinton, as did U.S. Attorney General Janet Reno, an admirer of her legal work. Hatch, considered by President Ronald Reagan for the High Court, called Ginsburg "a highly honest and capable jurist." Days later, Ginsburg sailed through the Senate's confirmation. She leaves an enduring imprint on American society. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to share with the Dinuba Government Affairs Committee on all things happening around the county. I shared Tim Lutz's COVID-19 presentation, along with items from board meetings pertinent to Dinuba and the surrounding area. That same day, I participated in the Ag Advisory Committee. We received great reports from Michael Washam on ag-related topics like the industrial hemp processing update, the Williams Act presentation, animal facility settlement implementation, and the animal carcass slaughter composting update. And other items of discussion and future items included a Farm Bureau update, how are the guidelines for party barns and assemblages of people working, and any new issues of concerns that AAC should review. We also brought up a question with regards to the solar imprint in Tulare County and how our neighbors really impacted by kind of the solar issue, and if there have been any issues, nuances, or concerns. And then also looking at how can AAC, the Ag Advisory Committee, be helpful to the county with regards to SIGMA implementation coming on board? So at the end of this meeting, I will be bringing a board member request on behalf of AAC regarding animal carcasses. And then I also participated in the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act with the Department of Water Resources last Thursday. I thought the meeting would go into greater detail, but it was more of an overview instead. Nonetheless, some key points that were included are the plans for basins that are high or medium priority due January 2022. All basins should be managing sustainably by 2040 or 2042, depending on condition. And then nearly all of California's 77,000 farms depend on groundwater. And then according to the California Department of Food and Agriculture, California farms generated $50 billion in revenue in 2018. And then many California communities rely 100% on groundwater for drinking water. I also participated in the countywide oversight board meeting last Friday. We were able to part ways with a property in Pixley that is going to a business next door in hopes of expanding his business endeavors. On Saturday, I participated in cooking around Tulare County with Food Link of Tulare County, where I served as a guest cook. It was a great opportunity to showcase my not-so-good cooking skills, and the video will be up on social media soon. And then lastly, TCAG and TCTA and the TCRTA, which is the Regional Transportation Authority, went well yesterday. I'm looking forward to, yet saddened about, Thursday's trip up to the mountain communities and forest area to see the fire devastation and its impact on Tulare County. Thank you, and that is all I have, Chairman.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, on Wednesday, RCRC had a board meeting and executive committee meeting afterwards. Couple of things to highlight from that. We took no position on Prop 22, which is the Uber, Lyft relief, as per staff recommendation. And surprisingly, there wasn't much discussion over that. And then we, there was another item that we were, we received a presentation from the County Medical Services Program, and that's, I'm not overly familiar with that program, but it's, it was somewhat intriguing. There's other counties that are involved with that, providing services to some indigent populations. And those counties are claiming that they're saving millions of dollars. I think Yolo County, their CAO claimed that they're, that they save about $1 million a year based on that. So that might be something to look into. I noticed that we weren't participating in that. But again, it wasn't clear to me what the exact benefit to the county would be. That's, that wasn't very obvious in their presentation. Last Thursday, I spoke at the Exeter Lions Club and provided an update on fire and COVID-related issues. Also, last Thursday, the Air Pollution Control District had our monthly board meeting. We received over $30 million in federal grants, which was the largest amount that we've ever received for those particular programs, primarily for tractor replacement. So that was, there's a lot of good efforts based on our lobbying and going back to DC. Also, we received a fire update and really talked about the air quality impacts and how it's been the worst in the history of looking at and measuring air quality for the district. And I think that's, it's not hard for all of us to recognize and understand, but to see the numbers associated with it, again, it just shows the emphasis of why the Air Pollution Control District is getting involved with forest health when I think on the surface level, it doesn't really, it doesn't, it's not obvious as far as why the Air Pollution Control District would want to encourage more forest management and do things along those lines. And I really give credit to our former colleagues Supervisor Worthley and Supervisor Wheeler of Madera County, because those are two things that they pushed for prior to me getting on the Air Pollution Control District. And so the fruits of being able to have those discussions and recognizing that there's a lot of nexus as far as why we want healthy forests and air quality is one of, one of the important reasons. There was also a meeting last Thursday of the San Joaquin Valley Water Blueprint. They're continuing to go through the process as far as gain additional members. And so there's additional entities in the northern portion of San Joaquin Valley that are joining. And ultimately, that's a positive thing because of the fact that it shows more of a regional approach to water issues versus just a smaller subsection of the region. Last Friday, there was a joint meeting of the, of WIR and the Public Lands Steering Committee of NACO. Considering that there's such nexus, staff decided to start having those together. Got some good updates as it relates to things that are going on in Congress. And ultimately, there's, there's some positive things happening on the administrative sides. Congress, it's a holding pattern until after the election, and that's probably not new to anybody. And then yesterday, we had a meeting of TCAG, TCTA, and TCRTA, the New Regional Transit Authority. And on the Regional Transit Authority, some of the topics of note that we discussed and encouraged staff to move forward with was to continue pushing for a unified way to collect fees and fares, something that was user-friendly, and so encouraging staff to figure that out. We talked about some of the, some of the challenges that are still remaining, but recognizing that we have a strong opportunity. Also, there's some challenges with CalVans and how we might be able to assist now that we have a focus on that, how we could assist either with helping them with achieving their goals and/or maybe providing some of the services that they historically have because they are having some financial issues. So I think that's really a real positive opportunity that probably wouldn't be there if we hadn't have formed this JPA. So if, I don't, I don't know that TCAG as a whole would probably be suited to take that on, but because we have this, it's, it's an opportunity that's, that I think could be very beneficial. And CalVans has been, in the past, very successful financially, so it should be a bonus. That's all I have.
All right, Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone. Few things, several things going on here lately. Last Tuesday, after the board meeting, had an opportunity to run by an emergency operations center over on Acres, and I had been by there a couple of times, both while it was under construction and just going into the building, doing other things. This was the first time I'd been there when it was fully operational with people from wall-to-wall in there and on all their computers and happened to get there right on ti, right in time for their evening briefing. And it was just very impressive to see all of the coordination and collaboration happening between all the departments, all of the hard work being put in, people thinking of all sorts of things sort of out of the box on how to, how to help with the fire and with evacuees and evacuees animals and property and already thinking about, you know, cleanup that's going to be happening. Just an amazing amount of collaboration going on in that, in that building. So just a personal thanks to everyone who's working in the, in the EOC and rotating in there. It's very, very impressive. On Wednesday, we had our San Joaquin Valley Regional Policy Council. It was our Valley Voice DC trip via Zoom, day two. And we, we met with Congressman Jim Costa, Congressman Jerry McNerney, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Department of Transportation. And that was a pretty good day. There was a lot of thanks still going on because of some of the build grants that we've been, been awarded, a $16 million one here that we mentioned last week for over by the International Ag Center, and then one up north in Stockton, which was a $20 million grant. So a lot of thanks going on for that during that day. And then also, this, part of this thing is air quality and water and transportation is what we're talking about. And so air quality sort of came to the fore in these meetings, as well as forest management because of obviously what's happening now. So that was, that was a pretty good day on the phone. Later on that day, I had another meeting with Harmony Magnet Academy out in Strathmore on the advisory board for the Academy of Engineering there. And I think it was the first time that we had spoken as a group in about five months due to the COVID shutdowns. And really interesting to get the input from the teachers that were on the line and administrators that were on the line, and actually a couple of students that were on the line of how they're doing. And because the particular model that they use is a real collaborative model, I had asked that question, "How are you doing that? How are the students getting together and doing their projects?" And so they're, you know, they're doing their portion, they're recording it, then they're sending it to their partner, and they're recording that and putting it all, piecing it all together. And so a couple of things that struck me is, one, that they're being very, very creative with how they're getting by, and the second one is that they all hate it. They're really looking forward to getting back, back together and getting that sort of dynamic that they had. But, but I'm proud of them for what they've been, really what they've been doing through this time. And then on Thursday, the 17th, I had the, our, our third day of the Valley Voice, and this was sort of our White House Day, or what, and so we, we met with Deputy Director of the Interior, Tim Williams, and spoke a lot about water, a lot about the watershed, a lot about forest management. They mentioned some things that are of particular interest to us, especially Supervisor Crocker and I, and also Valero has a little bit of the, the forest in their districts about categorical exclusions for removing some of these dead trees and some of the slash from projects that we've had in the past so that we'll get rid of some of that red tape. And they seem to be very ready and raring to get that done. They're taking care of it right now. I actually asked, can they elevate that also to say that the Forest Service will be in charge of doing that so that the counties wouldn't have to do it and, and ask permission or find the money? And so they were, he was very willing to do that, elevating it to the, to the Forest Service, even though it's not directly under Department of Interior. But that was very encouraging. We met with Congressman Josh Harder, and then with William Crozer, who's the Director of White House Intergovernmental Affairs. He spoke a lot about the Great American Outdoors Act, which is very timely because it'll be millions and millions of dollars, coming to the forests for more forest management, take care of some of the things that we're looking at now, and also trails, get some, some logging and thinning going, general management, and then also money to update the national parks that have been going, sort of slipping into disrepair over the last many years. So that was a very, very encouraging day, meeting, meeting with the White House, the group there at the White House. And, and so I'm looking forward to carrying on those conversations. And then on the 18th, I want to thank Sheriff Pudrow and Chief Norman and Unit Chief Estrada from CalFire for inviting me to go along for a tour of the West Castle Fire in the SQF complex. They took us up to Busch Park and Mountain Home Demonstration, State Demonstration Forest. And, you know, the, I think the thing that was really striking, Assemblyman Patterson from the, from the district to the north really wanted to go and see because Three Rivers is in his district, and he wanted to see the fire was moving that direction, see what was happening. So that was, that was sort of the genesis of putting the meeting together and the tour together. When we got there, I think everybody was pretty impressed with what was going on between the county and CalFire in, in cutting lines, in protecting the communities that are there, and also in the management that had been done beforehand. And so when we went right into the middle of the park and looked around, I mean, there are some places where you would wonder, did a fire even come through here? Were it not for the smoke in the air? And it's because they've done some, some good forest management over the years that they've, they've thinned and logged and prescribed burned so that when this fire came through, it was not nearly as destructive as we've seen in other areas. So that was a, I want to, again, thank, thank you, Chief, for, for taking us up there and, and driving. And we survived. He did give me one of those yellow turnouts to put on, and I thought, well, how close is he going to get us to this fire? But they didn't take us too close for comfort. Monday, as several have already mentioned, we had our TCAG, TCTA meeting. And then I also did run back over to the Porterville Fairgrounds, which is the Incident Command, and had a, had a press conference with CalFire, with everyone giving their updates on the Sequoia Complex, SQF complex. And so thanks for the invitation to that as well. And, and again, those guys are doing a great job out there. Tomorrow, have a ad hoc meeting with TESERA for the Pension Ad Hoc Committee. And then Thursday, we, as Supervisor Valero mentioned, we'll be doing another fire tour, this time up the 190 with the chief, with Supervisor Valero, myself, looks like Assemblyman Mathis is going to go along on that trip. And Perry Fenzel from Congressman McCarthy's office would also like to see up the road there. So just, just to close, to Chief Norman and to all those that are, that are fighting the fires out there, thank you so much, just yeoman's work in getting that fire. They had, they went up to 33% containment from 18% from yesterday. So a lot of work just overnight in cutting those lines and doing some backfires, and really appreciate all the work. Thanks. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Shucklin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I tuned yesterday, excuse me, attended the TCAG meeting. This afternoon, I have the Visalia Property Owners Association Board of Directors. Tomorrow will be our Tulare County Economic Development Corporation meeting. And then in the, later in the morning, our CSAC Counties Foundation, which I'm a board member of, and the foundation is the arm of CSAC. It's a nonprofit, and they are the ones that oversee the Institute classes and continuing education type things that all county employees can be a part of. I had the fire tour on there, but I'm not, I don't think I'm going now. But Friday, we have, I have my San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. And I want to back up on two things. The first thing is last Wednesday was our task force on homelessness for Tulare County, and it was a very productive meeting. A lot of folks were able to connect services. We had folks from the New Porterville Navigation Center talking about some of their needs. And Mary Alice Scarsiga from CSSET said, "Well, that's something that we can help with." So even on Zoom, we were interacting and getting services taken care of, which is really what the task force is all about, to bring all the entities that are helping our homeless citizens in Tulare County and seeing how we can work together in providing services. The other thing we also got was the update, or actually the first presentation, on our point in time count. Every year in January, there is a point in time count that is led by Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance. They have many volunteers that go out in the county and go out to places that are known that the homeless are living, whether it's on, you know, the Thule River, the St. John's, wherever it is in Tulare. And they gather as much information as they can on that, on that one date, hence being point in time, or actually, it's about a week. So the counts this year for Tulare County, what they came out with were 992 folks who are experiencing homelessness in Tulare County. I know that might seem kind of low. We may say, "Well, it seems more than that," but that, at, at those times, that is what they got. It's kind of like doing a census, you know? We always try to get as many folks counted and find out what's going on, but you can't always do that. So that 992, actually, there was a 22% increase from 2019. The other thing that we got at that meeting was an update on Project Home Key, which I've talked about, where we have the 99 Palms Permanent Supportive Housing that is going on. And then we had, recently had the, the reservation of funding of $6 million from the state for us to purchase another facility, be it a hotel or apartment building, that we can, again, provide more permanent supportive housing. So I'm hoping in the next year or so, maybe we start seeing some of those numbers going down as we start to house our homeless. Just a quick breakdown for the cities. Porterville, the count came at 213, which is a 21% increase. The city of Tulare, 203 individuals who are experiencing homelessness, which is a 39% increase. And in the city of Visalia, there was a 500, there are 540 was the count, which is a 14% increase. The numbers they also look at are asking folks, you know, "Why are you homeless? What are your reasons for being homeless?" Out of all of Tulare County, 20%, which was the number one, was unemployment. 13% were other. 12% were drugs or alcohol use. 10% were arguments, and then 7% identified mental health issues. And then we go on to, you know, after that is domestic violence, eviction, divorce. So you can find the whole report on the Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance website. It's broken down very well, and pie charts and whatnot. So I just wanted to give that information. Last, the last thing I want to do is, is, it's a historical thing, but I just want to note that on this day in 1984, the world was changed forever. And it's the day that our esteemed chairman, Peter Vanderpool, the third, fourth, fifth, what, third, was born. And, you know, after they, hey, whatever. I think that might be the last time he ever mowed the lawn, was with his little Fisher Price, Price toy. But when they made Pete, they broke the mold, and I hear they beat the hell out of the mold maker, too, for doing it. So happy birthday, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Supervisor. I appreciate the well wishes, and I'm curious where you got those pictures, but good job. All right, so a couple of things. Yes, it is my birthday, the 36th year of my life today. So kind of crazy to reflect back and, you know, realize that a third of my life has been spent here on this Board of Supervisors, and I really do consider it a blessing, and I love the work that we do each and every day. And it's great to look out and see so many familiar faces that I've been working alongside over the years. And just sure, sure am blessed and happy and look forward to what this 36th year of life brings. So that being said, a few things I wanted to highlight. Public meetings that are taking place this week that I think are noteworthy. This Wednesday, so tomorrow at 8:30 a.m., there's a retirement board meeting, and that's also an ad hoc committee meeting, which Supervisor Townsend will be participating in. We were unable to secure a facility that would accommodate the social distancing for a joint meeting with the entire Board of Supervisors, along with the Board of Retirement. So this is the setting we are using. But I do want to comment that I think this is a very important meeting. This is when the actuary comes and provides its actuarial report. And I think that they are going to be advising and guiding the Tulare County Employees Retirement Association to look at lowering the assumption rate, which will have significant financial impact upon Tulare County, both employer and employee. So it's just important that we all pay attention to that. And I know that we've had a great partnership with TESERA in the past, and I'm hopeful that that partnership will continue because the health of the retirement board and the retirement plan that we all, as county employees, rely upon depends upon the health of the plan sponsor. So we have to make sure that we are always considering that. Then tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock, the International AgriCenter will be having its monthly meeting at the International AgriCenter, or Heritage Complex. That is at 4 p.m. And then on Thursday, First Five will be having their Technical Advisory Committee meeting at 9 a.m. via Zoom. And then last but not least, I did want to comment, I thought it was really important for myself and as many constituents as possible to support the Tulare County Fair. That happened this last weekend, and given the environment of COVID, they still tried really hard to put on some sort of a community event. And again, that began with a really, what I considered to be a very special ceremony with the Veterans Quilt Ceremony. We had about 15 to 20 local veterans who were honored for their service to this country, and each were presented with a handmade quilt by the Valley Oak Quilters Guild. And I thought that was a pretty special thing, and the quilts are absolutely beautiful. The veterans were touched. They ranged from current deputy sheriffs, who were recognized for their service in the Armed Forces, and then all the way to veterans who were well into their 80s. So that was a very special event, and I was happy to emcee the event. And then got a little bit of fun later that afternoon, and I took my kids to the drive-through fair. And I think the biggest feature of the drive-through fair was the fair food. My son is six years old, and he got a two-foot-long corn dog. That was absolutely ridiculous, but that's what he picked out, and that's what he wanted, so he got it. But it was good fun, and I do just want to recognize the fair board and the fair staff for putting together a, a great family event despite everything that's going on. That's all that I had, that I wanted to specifically cover for Board of Supervisors Matters. We will now move on to take up item two, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Director Lutz.
To chair members of the board, CAO Council, I'm Tim Lutz. I'm Health and Human Services Agency Director. I'm Health and Human Services Agency Director. Starting off with our trend of showing a couple of the video series with our local businesses, have two videos wanted to show you this morning. The first being with Wildflower Cafe.
Hi, I'm Donna Bedwell. I own the Wildflower Cafe here in Exeter. And our real wealth is in our public health. Wear masks, guys. We got to do it. I wear a mask for everybody.
And our second video is Annabelle's.
Hi, I'm Annabelle from Annabelle's Bridal in Visalia, California. And I wear a mask for my brides. I miss my brides. I miss, I miss everybody coming in and getting all excited about having a big wedding. So our pandemic has hit tremendously in the Tulare County. And I would love to get back to business as usual. So please wash your hands, social distance, and please wear your mask for your fiance, for your bride, for your family.
And again, I just want to voice my appreciation for our local businesses throughout Tulare County who have agreed to participate in this mask-up outreach effort. Very much appreciated. And it's nice to see a lot of our business community. So this morning, coming with continued positive progress, our cases at 15,782 individuals. So that's up 421 from last week's report, which is a 2.7% increase. Again, very nice to see that continual decline in our, in our cases. We did see four additional deaths, which brings our total to 257. While it's tragic to see any deaths, it's nice to see that number decreasing from that 10 to 15 we were seeing on a, on a weekly basis. And then our, just looking at our total weekly from our comparisons, we were down 8% from the prior week, a modest decline from where we were before, but still showing that positive decline. And our case rate also showed a modest decline going from 12.5 per 100,000 to 11.4 per 100,000. Our testing volume, unfortunately for this last week, was below the state's average. So as I discussed last week with that case rate adjustment factor, the case rate was adjusted by 1.033 or 3.3%. And so that while our actual case rate was 11.4, the state is showing our case rate at 11.7 per 100,000. And then our testing positivity, this one very positive to report today. No pun intended on positive, positive. The testing positivity was at 7.7%. So that was the first time since June that we've dipped below that 8% threshold. And then our, can I ask a question? Of course. What are our testing amounts? Are we testing the same amount of people as we were when our numbers were higher? Or are we testing less people? Our testing volume is, is down definitely. And that's an area that we're wanting to really continue to push and grow on, recognizing that testing volume, particularly if the state is, is adjusting our case rate. If, if we're below that statewide average, we really want to see us getting that, that testing up. We've also gotten some clarification on our Optum sites, for instance, that were indicating, there was some confusion as to whether they would turn away asymptomatic people who were registering for a test there. We confirmed that that is not the case. And so our goal is to continue to try and encourage the use of those sites to keep our testing volume up.
So, so let me just chime in on that too. Tim, so what are we doing now that we have that clarification on the Optum sites to publicize and to get out there? Hey, even if you don't feel like you're sick, go get tested to be sure. I mean, are we doing anything? I know that we have a little bit of money from the CARES Act that's been allocated towards outreach. So I think that that's an important thing to do. And then just, just to clarify, if you've been tested before, can you be tested again?
Yeah, there's nothing, first question, easy answer. There's nothing precluding you from getting tested again. What we're doing-
And I think that that's something we can advertise and get out there too, to help drive the volume. I mean, because it benefits us the more people we know, if they're positive or negative. I mean, we want to make sure.
Well, and realistically, if you have people working in a service-based industry or food, you know, food production-based, that knows that they're more frequently potentially exposed to COVID, that there's no reason why they couldn't then say, I'm going to get tested regularly just to, to make sure for the assurance of family or themselves. In terms of our marketing efforts, so we've, we've modified our flyers back again to kind of where we were before, where we were encouraging more broad use. We've been reaching out to our partners, so all of the cities. We were giving them that information about the Optum site availability, encouraging them to reach out to their employees. Same internally to our, our county family, where we're, you know, encouraging staff that if they want to get tested, they can go get tested. And then also our facilities, like our skilled nursing facility, the providers there, encouraging them to make, make use of those sites. So we're, we're ramping that back up. Our understanding is we're probably a few weeks away from the state modifying their testing guidelines again to open it up. But, you know, kind of comparing across counties, it seems like a lot of counties have already kind of started to open those, those floodgates back up again. So we're, we're positioning ourselves to do the same.
Supervisor Townsend.
Yes, I think it's just interesting to note and to stay on that for just a second, that, that we were just penalized slightly, slightly. But we were, but our actual case rate for 100,000 was 11.4, but the state is looking at it as 11.7. So they're looking at it, so it's not a real number that the state has. It's, it's a falsely inflated number. And it's based on the fact that the state told us to stop testing people unless they were symptomatic a little while back. And so we, what we hit was, per your report, was 198 per 100,000 on the testing. The target's 200?
The target, because it's going to be the state average, it will change. The target this time, 216.35 per 100,000.
Okay, so 216, because I, because I noted, just looking at the, the other counties that, let's see, there's one. So there's two out of those, one, two, three, four, five, out of the eight. There was two out of the eight San Joaquin Valley counties that actually reached what the state, the state's target. So all of their reporting metrics are actually skewed by, by the state's penalties. So just want people to understand that some of the things that get reported out are actually falsely inflated by the state metric. Thanks.
Well, and this is a extremely frustrating thing, where we complied with what the guidelines said. We pulled back our testing, recognizing there was capacity shortages across the, across the nation, really. And I feel like then we turned around and got punished for doing the same.
Yep, for doing the right thing, you got punished. Yep. Thanks.
Supervisor Valero.
Yes, so I just want to, since we're on the topic of testing and testing positivity and such, I just want to say thank you to our staff for adding additional sites this week and next week. I know that that was a big concern of mine, as well as my colleagues on this dais. And you have made them readily available this week and next week, throughout all of our county. And so again, just thank you for that.
And our goal is to continue to ramp that up with our CARES allocation on testing. We have a partnership that we're bringing to the board next week with Cuiadelta to be expanding testing pretty significantly. And the nice thing is with their proposal, we'll be having really same-day turnaround on our testing. So I think we're going to start to see a lot of positive movement on the ability to test and the volume. Unfortunately, with infrastructure development, these things take a little more time. So we're, but we're also, I think, insulating ourselves a little bit by having locally developed capacity. So we're not as, as subject to some of the, the changes with the commercial testing.
But yes, your, your emphasis on our unincorporated communities is evident with the locations that you have chosen this week and next week. So again, just kudos to staff for making these available in underserved communities.
Thank you.
So kind of summarizing with those metrics, very exciting to see our testing positivity dip below that 8% threshold. That's the first of those metrics that would be considered in the state's red zone. Importantly, both testing positivity and case rate metrics must be in the red before we start that 14-day clock of being able to move to the, the red tier, the, the next less restrictive tier. So it's crucial, again, continuing to wear masks, you know, use hand, other hygiene, avoid large gatherings. And also, I would just say, particularly with our case rates finally coming down, it's, it's also crucial that, that people work with our contact investigators and tracers so we can identify potential exposures quickly and try and prevent it from spreading throughout the community. And then on our hospitalizations, and I was happy that I could get clarification before I came up here today. From the time that I hit send on this report this morning to now, the hospitalization numbers kind of stuck out at us as, as a bit peculiar. So did some additional digging originally yesterday. Our metric was showing 54. We realized there was a double count in there with our likely COVID versus our confirmed COVIDs. So that was adjusted. Our actual hospitalizations are around 37 today. So that's down 19.5% from last, last week, also a, a positive indicator. And then just a brief update on, on state activity and what I discussed last week. Last week I did discuss the equity measure. Notably, that was not released by the state last week, as they originally had indicated. From discussions with Department of Public Health, there are still concerns being raised by a number of counties across the board. And not clear whether that's, the equity metrics are going to change, if there's a temporary delay, a longer-term delay. Our next regular scheduled call is tomorrow, where we might get some more information on that. And gathering guidance, going back to the more confusion than there is answers. The, while the gathering guidance itself was not released in any substantial form, the state kind of did put out a placeholder guidance that, that is supposed to supersede the March gathering order. But really, you know, in, in reading through it, you're talking, you know, probably five sentences between the entire guidance. And it really leaves it more vague. What it states really is that gatherings are not allowed. But then it puts the caveat, unless otherwise allowed, in other guidance documents. So basically, those, those individual sector guidance documents would then supersede the, the single more unified guidance document. So it's not, it's not clear to us at this point. And I think we're waiting to see how that will play out, if there's going to be more industries. I know theme parks are kind of next on the list that the governor's been talking about and other types of areas that there's no way to open those without having gatherings. And then that's really the, the crux of our key updates. In a moment, I'm going to ask our schools team to come up. In light of just a number of questions that I know everyone's getting on schools, we felt it was going to be helpful to have our schools team come up, provide a brief overview of our process and answer questions. Dr. Hott also is, is on the Zoom and able to answer the board's questions. Before I do invite the schools team up, I did want to mention briefly, and a great question last week, on our child abuse CWS hotline calls, did a comparison from prior year to today. What we're seeing, if you look at point in time, as in through September, referrals are down 14% over, over the year. If you look month by month, you can really see the dip in the period that schools closed. And one of like such, one of the most crucial reporting mechanisms that we have on, on that side, schools. And it, it highlights for us the, the concern of, you know, long-term having, you know, kids more disconnected from some of those other social supports and some of those long-term repercussions. So excellent question and good to be able to dig through the data and bring it back here. You have other questions on other areas, by all means, let me know. And we'll be happy to pull that together for the board.
Supervisor Crocker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So that, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I, I saw the data and I just, oh, okay. Well, this is a situation where it's not necessarily the case. But what I'm hearing you say is that schools, because they report so many of, of the abuses, that if, if the children aren't in schools, then we're anticipating that the abuses are still happening. We're just not getting the reports because schools aren't doing that. So this is another critical piece that where we're, where because of what's going on right now, that children are possibly being endangered.
Yes, we definitely have lost or have diminished crucial resource that, you know, kind of identifies, you know, signs, symptoms of, of child abuse or neglect by having them at a school setting.
Thank you. And real quick, I do just want to thank both yourself and your staff and Dr. Hott for responding so quickly to last week's feedback from the board regarding grades three through six and the processing of their waivers. I know that in some cases, it resulted in the children in those age categories returning to school already. I know that it takes time for schools to prepare and get everything, and that's specifically within that waiver-approved group. But I just really do appreciate the responsiveness that you took and also Dr. Hott and the schools team to help make that happen and work with the state. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And actually, that's a good segue if the board is ready for the schools team to come up to give their overview, because they truly are the, you know, behind-the-scenes, working-hard team for this.
Good morning, Chair, Board, CEO, and County Council. My name is Chrissy Leach, and I'm a Division Manager for Tulare Works. But I'm a member of the three-person Schools Committee that's made up of myself, Stacy, and Natalie in the back. So we want to talk to you a little bit about the school waivers. Well, we want to share with you what we do as a Schools Committee. It's more than the school waivers and then also the school waiver process. So we provide technical assistance around not only school waivers, but day camps, childcare cohorts, and higher education as well. So part of that technical assistance looks like one-on-one consultations with schools or childcare facilities. School waivers are the big one right now, but we do talk to a lot of childcare facilities, whether it's an in-home daycare, a private daycare setting, or a schools childcare setting. We have a lot of those. Usually they're done via Zoom, on the phones, a lot of email exchanges that take place. And a big portion of the time, myself, Stacy, and Natalie can take care of those. We do have to bring in Dr. Hott and Alyssa Newman, our nurse practitioner, to answer some of those more nursing-based questions. Also, as part of technical assistance, we provide training on the guidance for day camps, childcare, and schools. we provide training on the guidance for day camps, childcare in schools. That guidance is provided by a, a couple individuals in public health and focuses exactly on what is in the guidance so that they're able to develop their health and safety plans so that they can bring their students back safely. Those trainings are provided in both English and Spanish, and we've done roughly 10 so far. Because the guidance has been updated recently, we are making updates to those trainings and they'll resume again soon. Additionally, what's really important about our technical assistance is that we're building relationships with our schools, we're building relationships with our childcare providers because if and when the time comes that they have a positive COVID test, we want them to have someone to reach out to and to contact. And while we might not be the ones to help them through the steps, when somebody tests positive, we can get them with the right people. And so having that relationship there has been really helpful because those things have already happened. Additionally, I would say that our goal is we want our children to come back to school, but we want them to do it safely. So whatever we can do to help our schools to prepare for that, that's what we're trying to do and to help them. Our partners have been amazing. The schools have been very responsive, very helpful, and they've really done a great job with their waivers. We wouldn't be able to do any of this without our collaborative partners. We've had a lot of meetings with Tim Hyer at the Superintendent of Schools Office. We've had a lot of meetings with the leadership at Tulare County Office of Education's Early Childhood Programs. We've participated in meetings with Community Care Licensing, California Department of Education, and then of course, all of our variety of schools and Institutes of Higher Education. I want to share with you a little bit about our school waivers, who's applied, where they are in the process. As of this morning, we have received 14 school waiver applications. There's a variety of them. Predominantly, they are private schools, there are a few public, and then of course, we have this one charter school. Valley Life Charter is the only charter school that has applied thus far, and they're in the process of just making some revisions so that we can move it on to the next step. Our private schools have all been approved and they're already operating K through sixth, with the exception of Grace Christian. We just got their application at the end of last week. We've reviewed it and they're making some revisions to it after some clarification was needed. But everyone else has their TK through sixth grade, and some of them might be open in providing services. Some of them may still be in the planning and preparation phase. For public schools, this was made yesterday and we've already had some changes to it. Oh, it's in there, very good. Hope Elementary, Outside Creek Elementary, Sausalito, and Stone Corral have all applied for waivers. They're all small K-8 schools. We did send last night Hope and Sausalito to the state for their sign-off and approval. The other two, Outside Creek and Stone Corral, are still pending some revisions on their end for us to move forward in the next steps.
Chrissy, can I just, sorry, Mr. Chair. Has Burton Elementary School submitted an application as of this morning?
They have not submitted a waiver application, but they have, a few different people from Burton have reached out to us to ask different questions around like bringing students in for testing. Their school nurses just reached out with some questions about just symptoms and how they handle students who might have symptoms or staff who might have symptoms. But we haven't received an application yet.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, a meeting with them tomorrow night at 4:00. We just set that up last night.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep. So the school waiver documentation that they have to submit is pretty lengthy. The application and instructions for that document can be found on our, the Tulare County COVID website. There's a School Resource tab that's there, and within that, there is the instructions and everything that they need to put in the plan. So a part of that plan, it does take a lot of work on their part, and they all do, considering this is all brand new and they've never had to do anything like this before, these schools do a tremendous job of trying to think through every possible thing in each one of these areas that they have to submit. Overall, I would say that we don't, we send back waivers with very few comments, just very small things that need to be addressed, mostly around testing and contact tracing. But some of the things they're required to lay out in their plan is how they're cleaning and disinfecting their classrooms, their cafeterias, their playground equipment. How are they cohorting their children and their staff? What does that look like? What is the face coverings or other PPE? Every school is different and their board might ask for different things or their families. So they have to submit to us what they're going to do there. What does those health screening looks like? We get a lot of questions around health screenings. What do they need to do to do that? Do they take temperatures? Do they not take temperatures? There's a lot there. Additionally, the physical distancing, staff training, and family training is a hot topic. Of course, testing, contact tracing. What triggers that school to decide that they need to pull back and go back to distance learning? They have to have a plan in place for that. And then of course, their communication plans. Whenever we meet with them, we've been collecting best practice, best practices from the different schools that we, the three of us have identified as being really great ideas, or Dr. Hot and Alyssa have identified. And so we're trying to keep a running tally of those so that we can share those. Some of the things on that list include like one school is using hula hoops with their younger children to practice social distancing outside and to teach them six feet of spacing. That was a really cute idea. That was also fun that we've been sharing with other people. A lot of them have purchased like text messaging based systems to communicate with their families. So we've been sharing that information. Also, of course, using touchless thermometers rather than thermometers that actually have to touch the students and staff. So as we see great ideas in their plans, which they all really do have great ideas, we try to document those and share with others. On top of that, on our website, you can find everybody's plan that has been approved. So I know many of the schools have been looking at other people's plans to see what they can put in their own plan so that kind of moves through the process a little faster. Overall, the schools have been really great, very thorough. They, they've really been amazing and very communicated with us really well. And it's been a very smooth process considering. I'm going to let Stacy take a minute and talk about how we review those waivers and what that looks like.
Sure. Good morning, Board members, Mr. CAO and County Council's office. Stacy Chastain, Deputy Director of Public Health Operations. So once we've gotten to the point where we receive the application, typically it's sent through our group email. The three of us monitor that on a regular basis. We're monitoring it currently every single day, weekends, nights, holidays, because we know just how important this process is. So we pride ourselves in our ability to, number one, be able to respond very quickly to all of our educational partners and provide them with the insight and feedback that they need to move forward in the process. So once we receive their waiver, we do what we call our first run, and we explain this to them. We have a rubric that's been developed and it touches on all of the criteria that the state's laid out. I'm going to go ahead and read through some of the mandatory requirements that we're looking for. One of the first sets of criterion is ensuring that students are able to socially distance and maintain six feet within the classrooms or other learning area at all times. It's been rather difficult for some of our school settings, so that's where we start talking about some of these creative strategies. And we're really looking for ways to help assist them so that they can meet that criteria. The next criteria that we're looking for is that the safety plans include the availability of appropriate PPE, personal protective equipment, as recommended by the local health officer as well as the state. And we're also ensuring that the elementary teachers and staff who are involved in in-person learning also have adequate PPE. We make sure that there's an availability of public health and school resources regarding COVID-19, including investigation and response for contact tracing. It's extremely critical that they've identified somebody on site who's going to serve in appropriate roles to ensure that that's occurring. And so also ensuring that that, they've gone through the appropriate trainings and that they're able to successfully manage any potential outbreaks at their school site. We're checking to make sure that staff are receiving training on the current COVID-19 recommendations and that they're ensuring constant and clear communication of their plan and any updates with their staff. We're checking to see to the extent in which the school district or the system of schools had consulted with relevant labor unions, community, and parent organizations as applicable. And also that they show an understanding of the testing resources within the community via employee health plans to provide access to periodic testing to all elementary teacher and staff. So when we go through and we're looking at these areas, what we're essentially trying to do is demonstrate if they've met that requirement. We use this rubric to show that in most cases that they've either partially met or have met, we'll document the page number in which we feel like they're demonstrating that they've met that criteria. And we include a narrative that explains why we believe they met it or why they may have partially met it. This rubric is then provided to them with a formal letter explaining all of the findings. And so if we believe, before we even sent it to our health officer or nurse practitioner for review, if we believe there's a few areas that they maybe need to tighten up, we'll provide that feedback to them and explain, here are the areas where we feel you partially met. Here's what we need to see you incorporate in order for you to meet this. So sometimes it goes through a couple revisions. In most cases, it takes only like one. We get it back, we review to make sure that the changes were incorporated, and then we send it to Dr. Hot and Alyssa Newman, our nurse practitioner, for review. Once they've made that review, they also will look for certain areas. And if they find any sort of sets of criterion that they think could have maybe been strengthened, they work with us and we liaise on that and work with our school partners to get them to where they need to be. Once they've met that, we all are in agreement, then we get the green light to submit them to the state. There's a form that the state has provided us that requires us to complete, and we have to indicate some information pertaining to the schools and indicate that we've done our due diligence in reviewing their plan, ensuring that it meets the state criteria. And then we are seeking that the state permit us to give them an approval for their waiver. That process, once we email them, we're finding that it takes anywhere from two to three days to hear a response from the state. They just respond back and they'll let us know, thank you for submitting this, we are approving and your recommendation. And then we communicate that immediately with our school partner. I want to highlight though, some of the most common areas that we've noticed for our schools that are requiring revisions are the contact tracing and testing areas. So specifically in contact tracing, this is something really new for our schools. They're not as familiar with this process. And as Chrissy had indicated, we've done a lot of trainings, but we see that there's still a lot of just very minimal information being put into that section. So we work really closely with them. We send them lots of different resources. We'll reference the plans that have been approved and we'll talk to them about the importance of the contact tracing piece. Because again, our, our main goal is just to ensure that they have that infrastructure in place because we know that when they start school, there is a potential that a student or a staff member can show up with the virus. And we want to make sure that they're prepared to respond. And we can probably go to the next couple of slides, Chrissy. So these are some of the, the resources that we'll share with them to make sure that they have all the information that they need. Even once they've submitted and become approved, we know that we're going to continue to be a partner in this process with these schools because they need to have somebody that they can call immediately should there be any sort of situation that comes up that they have questions. So when I talk about next steps, we actually have a team of about 15 nurses and health education staff that work already with schools, daycares, day camps. And we know that they'll continue to support the efforts of these schools as they return to in-person learning. And so what they serve is to really provide that true support when they're conducting risk assessments. They're going to ask some of those clinical and critical questions to really determine what the level of exposure is. And it's probably not super widely known, but we've already have experienced some of this with our existing daycares and day camps that are open. Since July, once we instituted the Cal Connect Contact Tracing Program, we've actually recorded 143 cases associated with either students that are in the Tulare County school system or staff members that work for schools within the Tulare County school system. So 143 since July is not that bad. But if we look about, at it from the context of if school was in session, this is potentially 143 individuals who could have been exposing other staff and students. So that is where we really want to focus on the critical components of ensuring that they've got very strong contact tracing, very strong ability to be able to recommend quarantine or isolation. Just to give you an example, like if a kid all of a sudden midday starts to demonstrate symptoms, what does a school do? Well, the teachers, number one, should know how to appropriately refer that student to an office where essentially they're going to have an isolation area. So that way, that student isn't continuing to potentially expose others. Hopefully, there's a nurse on site, but if not, because not all of our schools have school nurses, then they'll work with us to really start going through what those symptom checks should look like. Obviously, they need to get in touch with the parents. And then they start immediately on that contact tracing piece to determine if this child does come back positive, who do we need to be really monitoring closely? The other thing is they need to have elements in place to let those parents know that, hey, by the way, we had a student that possibly exposed your student this week in school. And so these are the measures that we have to take. This is just a completely different way of looking at things, and our school partners still really aren't quite there yet. But I mean, they're getting there. And so this is why the consults that we're having with them are really critical so that we, they feel supported during this time.
Stacy, real quick, before you leave that, you mentioned the students who have been infected. In those cases, were those all in settings that had a waiver-like plan in place protecting both staff and student populations?
I would say in most cases, these were students that were doing distance learning.
Distance learning?
Yeah, because they started, like I said, we started tracking this in July when our system was put into place, our new Cal Connect system. So there's various scenarios. However, we have actually clocked 35 daycare-related cases, which were actually, you know, in session. And so the students, the parents get very involved. We're, our nurses are communicating with the administrative staff that are on site, but they're also connecting with the parents. It becomes a very laborious process, but it's of course very important because the parents are very nervous about it too, and they kind of want to know, what am I supposed to do at this point? One of the other best practices that we've recommended, you know, many families have multiple children attending the same school. So if one of your child is exposed and has to go home, and then they start to develop symptoms, it's really critical that that school knows all of the linked siblings within their school setting so that they can immediately pull that sibling out of class as to not cross-contaminate with another subset who's been, you know, staying to their own when they're on campus. So one of the other things, you know, Chairman Vanderpoel, you were talking about the testing. And I think it's also really important to highlight that that is a component and a requirement of this plan is that these schools know what their testing opportunities are. And so when we did receive the CARES funding through ELC, we worked very closely with our healthcare partners and asked them to pay special attention to what we call special populations and high priority groups. We consider, we consider our school staff, our teachers, a high priority group because we know, especially when they re-enter in-person learning, the state is recommending that 25% of the staff get tested on a two-week rotational basis or 50% of their staff on a monthly basis. So as long as we continue to bridge that gap and make sure that they're connected with a healthcare partner, then we might see as schools start to return in person, an increase in the testing that's occurring. But also, we have put some infrastructure in place to make sure that our healthcare providers are supported to make that happen as well. So some of our schools have come out and actually had a, you know, indicated that they are fully connected with a specific site, and that site has agreed to do all of their testing for them. Whereas other schools have gotten creative and identified either state testing sites or have encouraged their staff to work directly with their primary care provider. So I think that covers most of it. I don't know if you guys have any other further questions about the process and...
Any questions from board members? Questions or comments specifically about this item? Thank you for the presentation. Go ahead, Supervisor Rock Crocker.
Yeah, thank you. I, as far as, I brought up previously about mobile testing. Have we, and I know you talked about some are looking at things on their own. Are we, are we doing anything as far as, I know you talked about best practices and kind of consolidating. What does that look like?
We have partnered with various healthcare centers who either have existing mobile units or who have agreed to mobilize their services. So in order to do this type of testing, you don't necessarily need a full-blown mobile unit, but they need to be able to bring the testing resources to a specific area and then have the appropriate setup there on site to be able to conduct a testing. So yes, we've had several healthcare partners here in our county who are committing to do that for us. A few of them are going to, coming to the board next week for contract agreements and others we were able to secure under a PSA. So those are very quickly getting implementing, but implemented, but something that we've been working on over the last couple of weeks.
Very good. And then as far as contact tracing, I know, what, in the spring, so we, we utilize school nurses for contact tracing and recognizing that some of these small schools may not have a full-time nurse and they're working with the Office of Ed to supply that. So are we looking at those individuals recognizing that they have a better background to help do some of those types of services?
Yes, absolutely. So that kind of goes back to those trainings that we were talking about. We're still reaching out to schools that we're recognizing did not take advantage of those trainings when we were putting them forward. And so now our school nursing team is working one-on-one to set up consults with those nursing team members. We're also recommending that in addition to the nursing staff attending, that the administrative staff and teachers, if the school is open to it, attend because we feel like it's going to be one of those things that even if the school nurse or the nursing personnel on site take the lead in this, the more people that you have on site that understand the process, the more flawless of an execution that they're going to have when it comes time for everybody to get, you know, all hands on deck to help in the situation.
And lastly, I just echo some of my colleagues' comments and thank you guys for doing all this. this work and taking in a lot of our feedback and making it a reality. So really appreciate the work you're doing.
If you don't mind, I'd like to share something that I found kind of humorous. I received an email yesterday from the board member on the Parish of Education from Zion in Terabella. The subject line said, "From the mouth of babes," and he said, "I had to share this with you because our school went into session last week." And he says, "I happen to have a grandchild that started kindergarten, and my wife was asking him how things were going at school, and he said everything was going really well. And she asked if his mom made his lunch for the first week of school, and he said yes. And she said, 'Were you eating all your lunch?' And he said, 'Yes.'" And she said, "Well, what about your classmates? Did they get their lunch packed?" And he says, "I don't know, Grandma. We have to sit so far away from each other, we can't see what they're eating." So he thought it was funny. It made me laugh, and I think his whole point was to just demonstrate that, you know, kids are resilient, and even though this is what we're faced with, the fact that they're able to get it done, they're getting them there in person, and it is going to be a completely different experience for the children that are going through this right now. You know, they're going to come through it, and I asked him for permission to share that story, by the way, and he was supportive of it, so just wanted to share with you.
Yeah, and thank you. I think that was a very good presentation, a good follow-up. I know that there are parents that are listening and are happy to hear how our school's team is working with the schools to facilitate children returning to in-person education where the schools can appropriately accommodate them and have a plan in place for their safety. I've actually spoken to a superintendent who had a COVID outbreak or had a COVID case at their campus in a preschool setting, and I know that she had questions and reached out to the team, and you were very responsive, and I do thank you for that. I think it's important that no matter what is done to plan or prepare, this was not a waiver-type scenario. This was just an open, I guess, childcare preschool-type setting. But they need that assistance and need that help, and you were very responsive and helpful for that individual. So even trying to get kids back or trying to respond to cases with kids, I appreciate you fighting for kids, because I feel like thus far in the pandemic, there really has not been enough advocates for children and for the benefit of their education in future. And so it's great to see our staff working so diligently to make sure that children are helped and have a voice and have someone fighting for them. Supervisor Valero?
Yep, so I just want to also just echo those that are listening. I know that I encourage a superintendent to participate and listen in on your presentation, and I know that it goes a long way in sharing and showing information, so that way others can really move along in the process. And again, schools are a complex system, but thank you for being on the front lines and being that bridge for our school districts in getting them up and running.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that presentation. Next item we're going to take on is item number three. That is a request to present a proclamation declaring the month of October as National Retirement Security Month in Tulare County. And we do want to recognize this occasion, even as the retirement board is prompting the lowering of the assumption rate, right? So we want to make sure we celebrate this month, and I do want to call to the front, Kevin Mike Sell, the Vice Chair of the Defined Contribution Committee. And I will, Kevin, do you want to make any comments before I present you the proclamation?
Please.
Okay, go for it.
If that would be okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Go for it.
So I'll try and keep it brief, but just, good morning, Chair, Board, CAO, and Council. Based on information from Employee Benefits Research, it's important for all of us to realize that less than two-thirds of our retirees are saving enough for their retirement. And so I think it just puts emphasis that what this means is that they're going to fall very short of what they will need in their retirement years based on their working years' income level. My name is Kevin Mike Sell. I'm the Fiscal Manager for Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency. I'm also in my eighth year with the Defined Contribution Committee and currently the Vice Chair. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'd like to first give you a quick update as to the status of our plan. To be clear to all in attendance unfamiliar with the Defined Contribution Plan, it's simply the deferral of current compensation for retirement purposes. And I'm very pleased to report that at this time, our Defined Contribution Plan is doing extremely well, even in the midst of the uncertainty due to the virus, which has obviously caused a significant downturn. As of June 30th, 2020, our plan assets were at $120 million, and that's up from $80 million just over five years ago. So that's a significant increase. The quarter ending June 30th, 2020, saw 2,700 of our county employees, out of a total of 4,300 eligible employees, make contributions to the plan, and this is a 63% participation rate, which is excellent compared to governmental entities averaging about 40% participation. But what that means to me is that 37% of our employees don't participate and are maybe unclear of their eligibility for the plan. I want to take this time to thank the board for your continued support to provide all county employees the opportunity to participate in the plan's match program. And to be clear, this match program allows non-exempt employees to contribute up to $6,000 of pre-tax income and receive from the county a $1,500 match. Likewise, with the exempt staff, they're eligible to contribute $7,000 to receive $1,750 in that 25% match. This is a tremendous incentive for employees to save for their retirement years, and I thank you for your continued support in that. And to be clear, those are the maximum amounts, and I think that that needs to be emphasized as well. Employees aren't required to put $6,000 in to get that. Somebody puts in $100, they get 25% back, so emphasizing that. We at the county are very blessed and fortunate to have a Defined Benefits Pension Plan, but some falling short of retirement income goals to have the ability to participate in this plan. It will continue to help them in bridging the gaps in their retirement years. This leads to education. We, as members of the Tulare County Defined Contribution Committee, take our roles as members very seriously. We place a large importance on the education of our county employees about their retirement options. We do our very best to help staff understand the full picture of their retirement options. We do various things to help them, including the continuation of an educational subcommittee. I'm a member of this committee. And we place a large focus on specifically reaching out to county employees about their retirement readiness options. Also, for many years, we have worked closely with Tulare County Human Resources and Development to annually participate in the Health and Wellness Fair, emphasizing importance of financial wellness. We also write various articles that are featured in county publications that are available to employees. And me, I make every effort to speak on behalf of the plan wherever I can, whether it's department meetings, staff huddles, whatever, wherever I can speak to advocate for our plan. This brings me to the National Retirement Security Month. The Board of Supervisors has accepted through proclamation the month of October 2020, the National Retirement Security Month. The Defined Contribution Committee has taken this awareness to the next level, working with Empower Retirement, to run four online WebEx sessions for our employees. These will be held October 5th, October 13th, October 22nd, and October 28th with different topics. Just to real quick, share with you some of these great topics: financial fitness, boosting your retirement savings, investing basics, women and retirement, and basic budgeting skills. So those will be available for our staff via the WebEx. This week's goals are to educate workers about the importance of saving for retirement, how saving will help them in their retirement years, and to increase the awareness of the various saving options. In closing, thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your proclamation and for your continued support of our Tulare County Defined Contribution Plan. Your diligence in this area shows your support for our employees, even and especially in their years after working. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation, Kevin. Very important information. I know that members of the committee are tremendous advocates for employees saving and planning for their retirement. I've had some heated conversations with our auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector over the years about that, and he's a tremendous advocate for employees doing that. And I think that it shows the effectiveness of what the committee is doing when you see us exceeding what governmental entities typically have amongst our workforce of only having 40% of their population participate, and we've got over 63. So I think that's something that's a real achievement and to be recognized, and you should be very proud of. So it's my pleasure to present this proclamation declaring October 2020 as National Retirement Security Month in Tulare County, whereas the cost of retirement continues to rise in part because people in the United States are living longer than ever before, and retiree health costs continue to increase at a rapid pace. And whereas social security remains the bedrock of retirement income for the great majority of the people in the United States, but was never intended by Congress to be the sole source of retirement income for families. And whereas recent data from the Employee Benefit Research Institute indicates that in the United States, two-thirds of workers or their spouses are currently saving for retirement, and that the actual amount of retirement savings of workers lags behind the amount that is needed to adequately fund retirement. And whereas Tulare County employees have many retirement savings options and can focus on saving for their own retirement, and whereas all employees can benefit from increased awareness of the need to save for retirement and the availability. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare the month of October 2020 as National Retirement Security Week in Tulare County, dated September 22nd, 2020. Couldn't pick a better day. Signed by Supervisor Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklin, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. So let's mask up for our picture here. I just want you to see if you can tell if I'm smiling or not. All right. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Kevin. All right. This is a request. Do we have to ratify or take action? Okay. We'll now move on and take up item four, a very exciting item here in such an agricultural county. We'll take up a request to give a presentation by the Agricultural Commissioner Sealer of the 2019 Tulare County Ag, Crop, and Livestock Report. Mr. Tucker.
We'll get the presentation up here in a second, but it's good to be here, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, supervisors, and Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson Flores, welcome. Yes, it's this time of year. It's a good time of year to take a look at what's happened in the past, what our growers, many processors, just our entire ag industry has done over that year, and the hard work that they've put into doing what they do, and in large part, supporting this county. So with that, I'm going to proceed. With this, our first screen takes a look at or displays our crop and livestock values overall. You can look at the far right side, 2019, we're at $7.51 billion, which is a considerable number of value in Tulare County. And as we all know, as you know, that that number gets replicated time and time again as those products are consumed and purchased and other industries play their part. So we're on a slow rise, if you will, from years past, and so that's good to see. Taking a look at our permanent planting acres, we have 449,000 total acres in this county, permanent plantings, and that this is an increase of over 9,557 acres. You can see that some of the primary ones to consider are the almonds at better than 3,000-acre increase, tangerines, tangelos, pistachios, table grapes. Wine grapes did drop off, which probably no surprise that the wine industry has had its challenges. And so moving on to our top five commodities in the Tulare County, milk and milk products is always our flagship commodity in a group at $1.6 billion in value, moving down to oranges, grapes, cattle and calves, and tangerines, which we'll take a closer look at a little bit later. Looking at Tulare County milk values, you can see it on the far right side, 2019, it has $1.6 billion, as we just mentioned, and it too is staying relatively average over the last five years, but on a slight decrease or downward trend. And our dairies and our, we'll tell you that it's been tough, working with marketing orders that they have been, and of course, recently, not going to show up here with COVID, but that is going to, is quite a challenge that will show up on next year's report as well. So to move on, I would like to take just a little bit of time and explain about the milk marketing organization. And in 2019, California moved from the California Milk Marketing Order to the Federal Milk Marketing Order, or FMMO. Moving to the Federal Milk Marketing Order puts the National Agricultural Statistics Service in charge of collecting milk data. Now that's not just here in California, but across the nation. Formerly, the California Department of Food and Agriculture was responsible for compiling this data. And that brings us to my last point, where I, what I wanted to try to explain to everyone is that when the CDFA was collecting that information, they had a very good pulse on and contacts with our creameries throughout the state, the organizations that dealt with our milk and the milk processors, and they, working with all of them and the ag commissioners, we had some very firm numbers across the state. And it was good, but the industry, you know, had their own challenges with that, and so they thought it was better to move to the Federal Milk Marketing Order, which they did this past year. Now with that knowledge and information, the Federal Milk Marketing Order are more so concerned with the pool money, the pool milk, not just in California, but the pool milk throughout the land, the nation. And made it a little bit more difficult to get the precise information that CDFA had otherwise. And don't, by any means, don't take it that it's not accurate information, because that's not what I'm trying to say. It's, they use a number of variables to determine their amounts. Not only are the inputs from the creameries, the pool money is their, the number-one value that they look at, but they also look at the cattle or the livestock head counts throughout the state and... counts throughout the state and the nation too. And they use a lot of statistical information that they're very good at to make these determinations. Every ag commissioner, to my knowledge, uses this number this year in presenting numbers towards their crop reports. So it's very uniform throughout the state. Next year, we will take a closer look at what we tried this year, is making more and more personal contact with our industries and our creameries, and get very firsthand knowledge, if you will, and numbers. It's difficult, and people want to keep their numbers closest to the vest, and we assure them that any information given us is secure, is not open to public information requests as far as any individual organization or company is concerned, the overall numbers and data would be. So something to look forward to, and I'll report further as we.
Tom, and thank you for pointing this out, and before you leave this, I just want to make a comment here. Under the California Milk Marketing Order, there was what was known as the California Discount, so to speak, on certain classes of milk. I believe it was Class 4B, which was whey and other products in that category. That's a type of milk breakdown. And basically, what that meant was California dairies and producers were being paid less for that particular component of milk than what was paid for immediately across a state line that was on the Federal Milk Marketing Order. So it sort of leveled the playing field and resulted in a revenue increase for California dairies, which is, you know, very much needed, given the high regulatory costs of doing business in the state of California. And, you know, one of the other unique aspects of California dairy, and I'm not sure if it's going to continue, because there's a frequent assault on this program, is the California Pool Quota Program. And if that is eliminated or changed, I'm curious to see how that will affect milk valuations and industry trends, et cetera. So there have been some changes, but I think one thing that I think you can see year in, year out, in the total milk and milk product number, is that prices fluctuate very regularly in the dairy industry. And I think it's also important maybe to point out in future presentations, how much the milk and milk product number is driven by price versus quantity of animals being milked here in Tulare County. I think that may be a better reflection on the state of the industry in Tulare County. But it's always great to see milk and milk products be the number one crop, and I hope that that will continue in our county. Just want to throw that out there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Moving on, we can take a look at the Tulare County Naval and Valenci value, as this is a standalone in the top five at .92 billion dollars. It too is stayed relatively flat, but on a rising trend, which is always good to see. This year, I wanted to spend a little bit more time, spending some focus on our exports and the countries that we export to, and the commodities, or the leading commodities. So you can see here that the top 10 citrus export countries, citrus, mind you, are displayed with the Republic of Korea, number one, followed by Japan and China, but not to mention there are many other countries. It's good, with a strong export market and abilities, there's more movement of fruit, it helps with the increased value, increased prices, not only for those export commodities, but here at home. This slide shows you the Tulare County grape values, which at the top is your 2019 numbers at .8 billion dollars, and significant, but I believe I mentioned a little bit earlier, the grapes have had a slight decrease over the last few years. I've heard a few of the prognosticators, if you will, believing that that is about to change. We have some new varieties out there, and we have some good export markets. So I'm going to be hoping and looking for that number to go back on the rise. Here's our top 10 grape export countries, and they are a little bit different. Countries themselves are essentially the same, but you can see Vietnam is leader in grape exports, followed by Mexico, our neighbor to the south, and Japan, and then, of course, the Republic of Korea, a little smaller piece of the pie, but certainly significant overall. Cattle and calves value, that has a little different shape to it, you can see the curve, and we're at .6 billion dollars in value, a lot of effort and value there, and it's certainly a very important part of our commodity, or overall industry value. Here's the tangerine value that I mentioned earlier. This is the one commodity that has taken an increase and done so significantly since its, I wouldn't say debut. I mean, we've had tangerines for a long time, but since '09, it's been increasing. We all know mandarins all falls into the same category, are up and rising commodity. You know, they're new, a smaller sized fruit, works well in our school lunches, and many different types of programs like that. So this is interesting, and it's good, it's helped to replace many of the older varieties that the fruit was smaller, and was about time for those to come out anyway. Well, a lot of them moved in this direction. So that's always good to see. Here, the slide shows you our export, that we export to 96 countries around the world. The one shaded in the lighter blue shows you that, you know, I would make a guess at 30, 75% of the world will receive exports from us of one type or another. Not sure why Antarctica doesn't have something, but nonetheless.
The West Armenia doesn't either.
Top export countries.
We grow our own.
And number one, Republic of Korea, right there, at 7,500 and some thousand cartons, followed by Japan, China, Mexico, and down, you can see the top 10. So again, a tremendous amount of effort goes into growing these commodities. They are typically grown to a higher standard to meet those export markets, and then always the, the hope is to receive a higher value and a higher price for the effort. Vital sanitary certificates issued. These are the certificates that my office writes and supplies to those that go through all of the different steps to get ready and prepared to ship their fruits and their commodities overseas. Each one of these countries has their own export requirements, and it's up to us to make sure we know what those are, and to test and inspect the different commodities to meet those requirements. We do our job, the growers have done their job, the processors have done their job, and of course, you can see the, the results of all of that. On this one, the graph is a little inverted in that the second bar at the bottom is the Republic of Korea at 6,578 certificates, mind you. Certificate could be as small as a few pallets of fruit, quite often, especially with grapes and citrus, you're talking about a whole sea train. You know, so it, that will vary, but a lot of fruit is getting moved. And total vital sanitary certificates down there at the bottom at 39,731. And our top export commodities, by commodity, are oranges. Take a good portion of the pie chart there, at 42%, and grapes, still very significant, at 19%. Peaches, pistachios, and then on down, you can see the, the top runners there. And then bringing us to the last slide we put in there, we, it's a nice Tulare name, you know, obviously, it's the Tulare City Water Tower, but nonetheless, this is Tulare County, and, and we're certainly proud of all of our community. So with that, I thank you, and if there are any questions, glad to hear them.
Any questions or comments from board members on this item? I see a thumbs up, is that a request to comment, or is that just an act? Okay, Supervisor Crocker, I'll call you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Always good to see Quincy's still on the, on the list. Do we, I haven't been able to find, are the, the other two of the big three, have they produced their crop report yet, is Kern or Fresno?
Our neighbors to the north will not put theirs out until mid to late October, and so no.
That's fairly late this year.
Yeah. And Kern, at last, I was told, is coming out this morning, and the scuttlebutt is that they're coming in right above us.
Even though they're south of us?
Bosphola?
They're south of us.
Yeah, is that not what I said? Sorry about that.
Is that all you had, Supervisor Crocker? All right, Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. That's a, that's a great report, and kind of amazing, really, especially that those export numbers are really something to see. Back on the cattle and calves value, we kind of went through it pretty quickly, but what are kind of the reasons for that particular shaped curve where we had that peak back in 14, 15, and then sort of a steady, slow but steady decline for the last four, five years?
No, I don't have a real good answer for you, but just looking at some of the, the larger things that have happened over the years, back in the 13, 15 timeframe, that's when we were going through our droughts. And I'm not quite sure why there's an inverse relationship there, but it appears to be one. So again, frankly, I can't give you a good response to that.
I guess if the grass isn't growing, it's harder to raise your cattle out there.
I suppose so, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So before I just make a final comment, I do want to point out, as a District 5 tribute to Mike Ennis, I want to call attention to the Million Dollar Product List. Item 30 is manure. Manure was valued at over $12 million last year. That was something that Mike Ennis always liked to highlight in his board comments in response to the crop report. But I mean, really, I do encourage anyone who has any interest in agriculture in Tulare County to grab this report. We're truly blessed to live in such a bountiful county, and you look at the products that bring in over a million dollars here in the ag functionality, whether it's pollination or manure, or, I mean, nursery products, it's just incredible what we are able to put out here in this county. You do a great job of synthesizing this information and putting it in a very readable format. I'm highly optimistic about where we will position ourselves in terms of agricultural county ranking, but I think regardless of what happens, we're going to be in the top three. And that's something to be incredibly proud of, and it should really serve as the basis that guides so much of our decision-making right here on this Board of Supervisors. So thank you very much, Tom. I appreciate this great report, and hope you have a great day. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, everyone.
All right, next, we're going to move on and take up item five, which is public comments. This time, members of the public may comment on any item that is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors but is not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. I do have one public comment request form from Pamela Silva from the City of Isalia. Pam, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, board supervisors. I'm here again to remind you that last week, you guys, some of you just wanted to table the, just looking at what the emergency order that is in our county. I explained to you that the 60 days by law, we're past it. We're past it for the governor, we're past it for our county public health officer. So we need to decide, are we going to follow the law, or are we going to ignore it? Now, there's a public health order saying, we've got, we can't assemble, that goes against the Constitution. I said all this last week. We're still there. None of that has changed. I would like it if the board would look at, just look at, what is lawful in that order? Think about it, what is lawful with that order? 60 days, are you going to ignore that? That 60 days from the governor? Are you going to ignore that we have to have more testing for people who aren't sick? To meet some imaginary metrics that some man in Sacramento made up? Is that where we're at? Where a very nice young lady thinks it's funny that a kindergartner said, "I don't know anybody else's eating because I can't see them." That breaks my heart, I don't think it's funny at all. Who in their right mind thinks that's funny? If we can decide what laws we're going to acknowledge, like the public health officer has broad rules to stop us from living our lives, ruining our businesses, if the governor can do this to us, and not go by the, the rules that are there, that come from our Constitution, let's look at what the laws are, and stand on the rule of law. It's there, I gave it to you last week. If you guys can choose to not look at that, I can also choose to not look at an unlawful order by some non-elected person whose staff thinks it's funny that a kindergartner went through that. It's not a normal part of childhood. Let's open our, our county, October 1st. We've had enough, guys, and it's up to you to insist that the law be followed with that 60 days. It's enough. I understand that there is a virus, and I understand that it's scary for everybody, but I know that hydroxychloroquine was put there for a reason. It's a good prophylactic. Fauci knew in 2005. If our, if our public health officer really wants to help us, we'll get some of that, that stock and give it out so we don't get sick. It's a prophylactic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional public comments here today? I know I want to call forward Chief Norman to give us an update on the fires.
Hey, they don't have your sign up yet, do they, Jennifer? Happy birthday.
Thank you, chief.
I was a 20-year-old firefighter with Cal Fire, and yeah, working part-time at accident ambulance, so yeah, I had no gray hair. Just kind of wanted to give you a quick update, and I'll try and be brief, and then you can ask any- Uh, just kind of wanted to give you a, a quick update, and I'll, I'll try and be brief, and then you can ask any follow-up questions. I'm sure everybody's been following operational briefings and some of the activities that are going on. It's, uh, we're about four weeks in and hope to get this, uh, buttoned up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we're at a hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred acres today, thirty-three percent containment as of six AM this morning, and our incident costs, not the county's incident costs, but the incident costs are about forty-one million dollars. So, um, for historical perspective, the McNally fire was a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-six acres, and that was about six weeks, and that was about forty-five point seven million dollars in two thousand and two. Um, unfortunately, our property loss is, uh, much more significant on this incident than that particular incident. Uh, at this time, we have had a hundred and eighty-seven structures destroyed, a hundred and fifty single-family residents, thirty-seven minor structures, and then we've had twelve reports of damaged structures. In the engagement we've had, at this point, we've had probably a hundred and ten Tulare County fire personnel roll through the incident at various times. At this point, this morning, we have sixty-five personnel involved with this. And in addition to that, we have local cooperators, Woodlake, Porterville, Visalia, Dinuba, City of Tulare, Kings County, Fresno County, City of Clovis. So it's a good faith effort on everybody's behalf. Um, our evacuation orders, we've evacuated thirty-four ninety-one, thirty-four hundred and ninety-one people. We've had fifteen firefighter injuries, we've had zero civilian injuries. We're working with RMA and HHSA on the damage assessments, and I think Anita will come up and speak to that in just a little bit. Just kind of walking through the fire, kind of our major strategy and tactics. As the bottom here on Division Zebra, we're trying to tie in all these communities. Fire is still out of Ponderosa, uh, the folks down there have been doing just a tremendous job burning between structures and keeping those structures viable. Um, we do have some damage assessment going on, on the perimeter, just to make sure that all those values at risk are being taken care of. Uh, Coy Flat, we have had, Camp Nelson, we have had some significant spotting below these communities. And when it starts spotting downhill in front of the fire, it slowly burns back up, uh, with the preheated hills. So, uh, again, our personnel are doing phenomenal work in there to keep, uh, picking up those spots. Uh, we, uh, working up here, we will continue to tie in those lines, suppression lines. Uh, again, as it was discussed yesterday in the ops briefing, to try and keep a catcher's mitt on this, where you see the black lines, that's coming through there, and this is looking very, very favorable at this time. Um, once we get that buttoned up in the next five days or so, uh, we'll be going to what's called, um, just mopping up and patrolling to make sure that we don't have any re-ignition from the previous fire. One area of concern, as we're tying, trying to tie this, this, uh, Division TT, is we're coming up here and we're firing this. That's where you're seeing all the red and not as much black on this incident. So as we continue to fire that to grouse, we should have pretty good containment on, uh, this particular, uh, branch of the fire on the West Castle Zone. Moving up here, what that does is that's going to redirect the fire into some more assets at risk, and that did cross the park boundary, I believe, three days ago. So they're actively engaging on that. Uh, we did patrol with a task force yesterday, Mineral King and Silver City, to make sure assets at risk were taken care of. Pretty good defensible structures up there, we have done some previous tree mortality work and prevention of some of those, uh, fire getting out in front of that. And, um, I, I'm sure all of you have been up in that area, there are some, uh, some significant rock outcropping, so we should have some natural barriers in there that will assist with suppression. Burning up to the north, uh, again, the shotgun fire, uh, sort of, uh, being monitored at that time, it's right about a thousand acres, so not creating some concerns. Uh, northeast, uh, they're catching that, it is staffed, they're doing some pickup and some containment on that. Other areas out here, going into burn scars, really not a, a lot of concern out there at this time. Um, our previous area of potential concern down the road was this potentially burning into, uh, Kennedy Meadows in the southeast portion of the fire. Doing a pretty good at tying that in, and then we do have Lion Fire, McNally Fire burn scars in that area, so crews are, uh, doing a good job of picking that up. Lot of phone calls from community members, uh, very, very, uh, nice, some, uh, very, very, very traumatic, very upset, obviously. Losing your home is, uh, one of the most tragic events that can ever occur in your life. So we've been, uh, trying to be very sensitive to that, trying to get them the resources they're in need. And now, as we shift into this, over the next couple of weeks, we'll go into the recovery mode and, uh, try and help people get their, their lives squared away. That's it for strategy and tactics and kind of updates, um, all thrown over to Anita unless you have any specific questions for me.
Anyone have any specific questions for the fire chief? I just want to say thank you, Chief. Uh, I do appreciate the regular information and you making sure that we're always informed with what's going on. I know that, uh, your men and women are working really hard, and there's, uh, close to fifteen hundred firefighters that are up in our backyard fighting and, and doing everything they can to protect structures. And, uh, please do pass on our thoughts and prayers to the fifteen who have been injured. Uh, we thank them for their efforts, and we're truly blessed to have dedicated people trying to protect, uh, life and property here in this county, uh, especially in, in a setting that they had no control over, uh, uh, the outcome or what they're dealing with, uh, right now, uh, currently. So, uh, sure appreciate it, Chief. Supervisor Valero?
Thank you, and just like to echo Chairman's remarks. I, I, again, on the front lines, doing the work, um, and continued success as we move through this hardship, um, especially with, in our mountainous communities. Uh, I will share also, just to, um, also give, uh, a shout-out to our, uh, teams that are working with our displaced animals. I had the opportunity to go out to the Woodlake Rodeo on Friday, um, and Tricia Stever Blattler is doing an amazing job uh, of identifying, locating, and managing, uh, the displaced animals on that property. Haven't gone to the Porterville one, but again, the Woodlake one is well-managed, and thanks to the team, as well as everyone, for their efforts.
Thank you, Supervisor.
All right, Supervisor Crocker?
Uh, thank you. Appreciate all your work and, um, just want to, um, give my thanks and, uh, and it's good to, good to see Chief McLaughlin, um, taking on a leadership role. I know he's been, um, I don't know all of what's going on behind the scenes, but it's, it's obvious that he's, uh, stepping up, representing the agency, the, the department very well. Um, and something that's, you know, probably not typically our role, but, um, there's a need, and so I, um, please give him our appreciation for his efforts. Uh, and I, I think that's, you know, I know one of the comments that was made at the, uh, town hall on Sunday evening, or Sunday afternoon, was about debris removal. And so I think that that's something this board needs to be looking at, options. I know that other counties in the past, when they've had, uh, devastating, uh, fires, that that's something that, um, we need to help assist with. And I know staff is already, uh, reviewing that and trying to get, uh, out in front of that. And so I, I think the, the comments that were made even yesterday during the press conference, as far as, uh, being able to help residents rebuild quickly, um, I just echo those comments, uh, and making it as easy as possible. I know that we have folks from, uh, RMA here, appreciate you guys, um, and the efforts. It's, it's really been a team, uh, effort from my vantage point, from seeing it, uh, the, the website coming up very quickly. Um, and it's, I mean, any type of government activity to come together that fast, and, um, very user-friendly, um, just from what I've, uh, perused and, and noticed. So, all, all very good things, and, um, and I appreciate the efforts to try and, um, get our, get our stuff in order so that we can raise the awareness at the state and in Washington to try and get those, uh, state and federal declar- emergency declarations so that, uh, we can help out our residents. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, thanks again, Chief, for all of your hard work, and I, I did want to just relay that some of the members of your team, uh, that I've talked to, um, are very, very proud of the work that you're doing and the work that they are doing as a team, because they've, uh, they've truly stepped up and probably even out of their, as Supervisor Crocker was saying, out of their normal operational status by far, uh, to do the things that they're doing. And so your own team is very proud of, of the work that you're doing, and, uh, and as a team, they're, they're proud of each other, and we share that, that pride. So thanks again for that. Just one, one quick question, I have quite a few questions about Ballch Park Road. I know it's being used heavily for operations and getting those lines cut in and backfire, backfiring. Do we have any projection that we can share about when they, some of the residents in that mandatory evacuation area will be able to go to a voluntary?
Yes and no?
If the answer's no, that's okay, but I just wonder.
The fire activity there, as you saw the other day, is pretty minimal in there. Um, minimal is a pretty relative term, but, uh, um, I'm hoping we can button that up in the next couple of days, hit some hotspots in there and, uh, be back in there. Ironically, uh, my neighbor, who's a very solid Korean War veteran, has a cabin up there, and I'm getting this every morning before I hit the pavement. So, um, I will talk to Chief Estrada and see what we're looking at as far as the timelines and letting people back up there.
All right, and thanks again.
For my well-being at home, too.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you.
Anita?
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpoel, members of the board, C O and council. Anita Ortiz, Human Services Director, thank you for having me this morning. I'd like to just share an update on care and shelter as we, uh, support our fire department in our community. We thought it was important to, to come and give you an update. Definitely lots of great teamwork, um, happening over these last several weeks. Um, because we definitely saw a need in our community, we, um, opened up two temporary evacuation points, one in Porterville and, um, one in Exeter. Those have been staffed from eight AM to eight PM, and that started on Sunday, the thirteenth. Um, we had multiple staff, we partnered with American Red Cross, we also had staff from Behavioral Health, Human Services, and Public Health. We felt with everything going on and just adding another layer of a disaster, that it was really important, um, that we partnered across inter-agency, and of course, with the Red Cross on that. Um, we are going to have a change starting tomorrow, we're going to continue to have our temporary evacuation points open. There's definitely a need, especially with, um, multiple orders out, et cetera, as just a point of contact for our community to have, to come and ask questions, et cetera. But we're going to keep those open from eight to five, seven days a week. And then after five o'clock, there will be information outposted for our community to be able to call a one-eight-hundred American Red Cross number. And then United Way has also partnered with us, and folks can also call two-one-one for assistance with shelter and any other needs that they have. I also want to share that Rosemary Costa, the executive director over at United Way of Tulare County, has just done a tremendous job in partnering with us. And we know that during a time of need, our community is just exceptional, their turnout is always, um, above and beyond. And so we really needed a partner to help us with donations, we definitely didn't want to turn them away, we knew that multiple families would need them. So she partnered with the Salvation Army, Visalia and Tulare, and also the Parenti Network in Porterville as having a drop-off site. And at the agency, at the Health and Human Services Agency, we created a food operations team specifically for those affected by the fire. And they have been delivering, um, those donations to all the hotels that our folks are at, um, which I think has just been a great collaborative, I mean, project for us. I mean, we're just can't be more proud of how everyone has come together. I do want to share with you where we're at as of today, just a little bit ago, in terms of how many folks we have, um, that have sought shelter and that we've been able to assist. And as of this morning, it's a hundred and fifty-seven families totaling four hundred and ten individuals. So we definitely, um, have, you know, met the need with multiple partners. We have families, um, who have nowhere else to go, or maybe stayed with a friend for a couple of days, and now are saying, you know, we need to seek shelter. We've also been able to collaborate with local RV parks, as well as we have folks who have those fifth wheels, who would like hookups, et cetera, to be able to park, you know, during this time. So lots of teamwork. Also, as we continue to see the need in, um, being over at the E O C and partnering with, uh, Chief Norman, as they get these assessments done for homes and families who have lost their homes, we needed to really come together and figure out, how can we respond to the, you know, thousand-plus phone calls that Chief's getting and his secretary? And so we decided to partner with him and with RMA on creating the S Q F complex hotline. And that opened on Saturday morning at nine o'clock in the morning. It's being staffed by Human Services, Behavioral Health, because we know that the phone calls that are being received, there's folks on the other end that could seek services as well as our staff. Since this is our first time having to open a hotline, we know that that's, those are difficult conversations and difficult news, um, to translate over, over a telephone. And also to help navigate that website, even though I T has done a great job with that, our older adults aren't always savvy on, on the technology piece. So we have folks on the other line that are helping them navigate those things. So we created that, um, RMA also partnered with us on that. I T has just been a tremendous help, I mean, we turned it around from like four-thirty on Friday to go live on Saturday morning at nine, and they partnered, and I couldn't, uh, Matt's probably gonna, I told him he's gonna miss me saying Matt, 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 because I've been calling him over and, um, and also Bob has just been a tremendous help. And I want to thank them for, for joining me this weekend, um, to get staff all set up, uh, through the weekend on that hotline. We also wanted to make sure that our staff working that hotline, uh, received an orientation, uh, from RMA, I T. Captain Bear joined us and myself, just in how to take the phone calls, what to expect, what kind of language can we use when we're helping folks? And then to make sure that we were responding to the thousand calls that Chief had already received prior to us opening the hotline. So what I want to share with you next, and Matt's gonna, um, help me get this up on here, is we developed a dashboard. I'm not going to say we and take the credit, because it was I T and all of our staff working behind the scenes, and they did, just did a tremendous job on this. Awesome, learning something new this morning, thank you, Matt. Um, I told him he was going to be here, and that gave me some level of great comfort to make sure this, this all got up and running. But this is the dashboard we have actually going at the E O C, and it's still being polished up as we utilize it. But you'll see that as of Saturday, there's four hundred and twenty-eight calls that have come in, um, and we're partnering with RMA on this. You'll see the bulk of the calls are for RMA, but they've taught us a few things in the last few days, so we've been able to team up and support them. But just in terms of the need out there for this hotline, and for folks to actually hear a voice on the other end, um, when they're navigating and trying to find out if their property, you know, was a total loss, a partial loss, and then us also being on the other line to offer any supportive services. So this is a point in time as of a little bit ago, um, and this constantly is updating and refreshing in the E O C. So you'll see our staff are busy in there, we have about fifteen total staff right now dedicated, um, to this effort. So that's all I have for the update this morning, but I'll take any questions in terms of care and shelter, or anything else that I may be able to answer.
Okay, um, specific questions for Anita, Supervisor Shuckling?
I don't have, I don't have a specific question, it's, it's just, again, um, thoughts of gratitude. You know, we heard from, from Chief Norman, and we all, you know, we all know, you know, our firefighters are out there working the, the, you know, in the trenches, the front lines. Uh, but we sometimes forget that it trickles down, um, into this, this web of so much help and all. And so I just want to thank you and, and everybody who has, uh, had a hand in this and continues to. And, you know, the thoughts, like you're saying, the behavioral health part of it and, and all of that just plays a big role, so thank you.
All right, Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, I want to, uh, echo that, uh, thanks, that, uh, just, you guys have been doing a tremendous job. Uh, that, um, uh, that damage assessment interactive map was, that, that's pretty amazing. Uh, that, people started calling me right away, uh, whenever they saw, they kept asking and asking, "How do I know, how do I know?" I said, "Here's how you know, you can go in and put your address," and I, I went in and used it, and, uh, boy, what a, what a great tool that is, even with photos and things. So, uh, thanks for putting that together. I need a quick question on the, uh, because we set up the RVs and fifth wheels, uh, got, got the spaces and hookups, are there still open spaces out there?
Yes, there are, they can utilize the two-one-one, we have several spaces still available.
Several, okay, very good, excellent. And then, um, I think Supervisor Crocker mentioned a minute ago, the, uh, disaster assistance for when it does come time to start cleaning up. Um, is that process already underway, getting?
But what we've thought about is we transition from a hotline to actually recovery, likely going to keep this standing exactly for that, creating a local assistance center to ensure that folks have a way to get help on the recovery end, and also just with documents like getting new birth certificates, driver's license, social security cards. We're definitely going to stay alongside our community during recovery.
Okay, and are we, um, are we going out and looking for disaster assistance funding from federal government and state?
So I know that Andrew over at Office of Emergency Services is definitely working on that, our proclamations and declarations that are needed to ensure that we can, uh, get continuous funding and assistance. to ensure that we can get continuous funding and assistance through state programs and federal programs. So yes, we are definitely on top of that. We know that's that next phase of.
Yeah, that'll be the next drop right there. Yeah, and then I know I'd already heard a little bit from R M A about, about expedited permits whenever the time comes to start rebuilding. And then the other two aspects of that that I'm hearing from people is, can we pull a trailer up and park a, you know, a trailer RV on the site while they're, while they're building, which I don't think is a problem in particular. I think we have that ordinance already. And then the other thing, the interesting thing that came up, and this is more for Solid Waste, is that the transfer station up in the Camp Nelson area, they're, they're really asking that those, those hours would need to be extended when all this construction is, is happening. So we're probably going to have to do some pretty big changes up there to make that happen, to extend hours for that. So I really appreciate all the work you guys do. It's, it's great.
All right, and then Supervisor Valero?
Right, you answered my question with regards to the hotline and how individuals were being briefed in order to receive those calls, given that we were pulling from staff and being able to make sure they were up to date on all of that. But thank you so much for providing that information. In addition to that, again, want to just give kudos to Cassie as well at Animal Services for her work in really organizing our animals and livestock. And then also to the Lions Club of Woodlake for their space and providing shelter for these displaced animals. Didn't want to finish my remarks without mentioning them as well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. C O?
Quick update on some of the questions that have been asked and just for public interest. One is, I have tasked Andrew Lockman, our Emergency Services Manager, to set up a recovery task force, and that would be an interdepartmental task force of R M A, Solid Waste, all of the county departments to sort of tackle all of these questions and issues that are coming up that we're going to face once the fire has, has been extinguished. Number two is, yesterday, in my capacity as the Emergency Services Director, we did submit a letter to the Director of Cal O E S requesting that Tulare County either receive a new federal major disaster declaration or be added to one so that we could secure individual assistance, also Category A debris removal assistance, and other categories of assistance under the Stafford Act and the California Disaster Assistance Act. So we'll await that request, but just wanted the board and the, and the public to know that the request has been made and it's there, and hopefully we'll have some more information for you as that process works its way up.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Anita. Again, appreciate all the work that you two are doing and the work being done by H H S A during this difficult time for your office as well. So hang in there.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, next, we're going to actually close the public comment period, and we will continue on with our agenda and take up the consent calendar. Item six, we are going to pull from calendar. And then items 18 and 19 have requests for public comment, and those will be removed from the calendar as well for separate consideration. Are there any additional items to be commented on or corrected by board members? Members of the public, seeing none, the Chair will entertain direction. I have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will take up item 18 and pull that from calendar. And that is a request to approve agreements with the following cities, Dinub, Exeter, Farmersville, Lindsay, Porterville, Tulare, and Woodlake for permanent installations of a ballot drop box. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair will first send the public comment. Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name is Alana Faldemar. I'm from the community of Pixley, and I want to thank you, Boarder Supervisors, for giving me this opportunity to make a public comment. It's in regard to the secured ballot boxes. I'm wondering, because I don't know that much about it, but I know that we don't, the unincorporated communities aren't going to have them. I just feel like that in the name of equal opportunity, we should have that opportunity as well. We have the same situations that the, as these bigger cities have. There's some, for example, Visalia has several of them polling places, or I don't know if it's actually just secured ballot boxes, but so does Porterville. I thought, you know, it would be great if they would, like, give some to some of the other communities, naming unincorporated communities, who we also are taking into factor, you know, that we have disabled people who can't get out, and it's better for them to be in their, in their town. And the current process of education, you know, that parents are having to be there schooling their kids, and also, you know, seniors. And so I was just wondering if it's pretty much set in stone, or is there still an opportunity for other communities to have these ballot boxes? Is it a question of funding, or is it a question of personnel? I, for one, would be willing to volunteer this election day to be able to have one, but I don't know exactly all that it entails. I would like to know if I can make a difference. I would like to make that difference. And so that's all that I have to say, and I want to thank you for listening, taking time to listen, and I hope that you take these factors into consideration. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for the comment. Any additional public comments related to item 18?
That is the only one. We do have the Register of Voter available if she would like to speak.
Yeah, please do, call her in.
Michelle, are you available?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Board. This is Michelle Ball, the Register of Voters. You know, when it came to the ballot drop boxes, we were required to provide one for every 15,000 registered voters. And this all came about, and we had a short period of time to, you know, look at the geographical areas and try to find a location that was best for the 15,000, which is the majority. So a lot of them ended up in the cities. We certainly can look at, you know, providing them in the rural areas. I don't know if we could make that accommodation before November 3rd, but it's certainly something that we can look at for the next election.
Okay, thank you for that feedback, Michelle. If there are any additional questions or comments, we will take them now. If not, Chair will entertain motion.
No.
I have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin, second by Supervisor Crocker.
Supervisor Shucklin, can you please vote?
All right, motion passes unanimously now that Supervisor Shucklin has voted. Next, we'll take up item 19. This is a request to approve a proclamation declaring September 22nd as National Voter Registration Day.
Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning, this is Blanca Escobedo with Leadership Council. I'm also calling today in support of ballot boxes in unincorporated communities. Today is National Voter Registration Day, and I have no doubt that everyone on the board wants increasing voter participation and more Tulare County residents exercising their civic duties. Unfortunately, rural residents will not have those equal opportunities to vote this upcoming election due to the lack of ballot boxes. We, sorry, we believe that the absence of secure ballot boxes in these communities, they also happen to be disadvantaged communities, and that furthers the disenfranchis, disenfranchisement of them. I know that the county and the registrar are supposed to consider voter convenience and transportation, among other things, when determining the locations of the ballot boxes according to the California Code of Regulations. And transportation is a really common barrier faced by residents of unincorporated communities. And with no polling places or ballot boxes nearby, voter participation may be low. So I hope that before November 3rd, the registrar can look into this and hopefully place some. And we would be happy to work with the registrar as well to locate good locations, maybe staff them if needed. Furthermore, with COVID impacting isolated and rural communities especially hard, many households are not going to be able to or are going to be hesitant to go to nearby polling places, which we actually can be up to 30 minutes away for some households. We also have some concerns that not including ballot boxes in unincorporated communities is going to have a disproportionate impact on race and ethnicity, since 67% of unincorporated communities are Hispanic or Latino. And if we are not promoting equity and providing accessibility to voting, then we are telling them that their vote is not important. An elderly resident in Metheny Track who does not drive gave me permission to share that. So he used to pay someone to drive them into the city of Tulare for the regular businesses, like picking up prescription, prescriptions, and even voting in previous elections. However, recently, because their income has been limited, they expressed that a ballot box in the community would not only save them a trip into town, but it would save them money as well. So in the spirit of National Voter Registration Day, we hope that the board and the registrar can work together to place the much-needed ballot boxes in the unincorporated communities. Residents from Ivanhoe to Dan, Pixley, Metheny Track, East Rosy, and Tulerville have expressed a strong need for these, and it would make them more likely to vote and ease the burden to drive and avoid gatherings. We need to bridge the gap that places barriers on these communities, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments, Madam Clerk?
That is the only comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Is Michelle still on the line, or would you like to chime her in if she wants to respond to that?
Michelle?
Yeah, yes, I'm here. The Secretary of State with regard to, you know, not giving the voters an opportunity to vote, they will all receive a ballot in the mail, and they can send that ballot through the mail process, and they don't have to pay postage for that. In addition, you know, like I said, the ballot drop boxes were located in an area that was best suited for the geographical area of the 15,000 registered voters. We can certainly look at putting ballot boxes in those areas, but, you know, same thing when you have the polling places. A lot of those areas didn't actually have a polling place because they didn't have enough, they didn't meet the threshold of the 250 registered voters. So certainly, we can, you know, look at it for the next election and talk to community members to see where we can place some more ballot boxes out in the rural areas. We're not opposed to doing that. It was just that we were under some time constraints to get all of this done before the November election.
Yep, thank you, Michelle. Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, there's a, I, I'm encouraged and I'm glad to hear that there's renewed interest in in-person voting, especially for rural areas. I think it's really important to be able to have that option, to vote in person. It's something that I have enjoyed in the past, somewhat of a social event in our small communities. And, and I'm encouraged that we can get back to that and expand precinct polling site locations rather than decrease it, recognizing that there's a cost, and there's nothing else I move to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, but I also have a comment from Supervisor Valero.
Yes, so I just also wanted to share, although, great work, Michelle and, and team in terms of identifying these locations for these ballot boxes. I know that there's also a need in underserved communities to really get out the vote. One of the things that I would encourage our Elections Division to also consider is making sure that we do a P R for securely putting it, well, being able to put your ballot in the mail and be confident that it will be safe and secure. I know several who obviously choose to drive to and vote in person or drop off, which you can also do. But a, a unique emphasis, especially during this time, that if you fill out your ballot and decide to put it in your mailbox without postage needed, that it will still be safe and secure and will go to the right location. And so just wanted to know if we can emphasize on that as well.
And Supervisor Valero, in response to that, we have that ballot tracking system, Where's My Ballot? And we've been promoting that a lot on our webpage. I know the Secretary of State has been promoting that, so folks can put their ballot in the mail and be reassured following the process through the mail system of when it leaves the print vendor, when it gets to their mailbox, then when they stick it in the mail, they return it to us. They'll know exactly those timelines.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the work that's being done, Michelle, to get out the vote and to make voting very easy for constituents. I don't want anyone to believe that regard, or that because of where they live, they are not going to be able to vote. I am pretty sure that each ballot that's being used during this election will have a return postage-paid symbol on there, so no one's going to have to pay for anything. There's no effort to discourage people from voting. We are rather making it very easy for people to vote. And I want to thank Michelle for all her work and the effort of your office to make sure that that happens. So this is going to be a smooth election, we hope, and everyone who chooses to vote will have the ability to do so. Thanks for that. We do have a motion by Supervisor Crocker and a second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please vote. That's okay. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on on our agenda and take up the untimed portion of our meeting agenda. Take up item 23, which is a request from the Human Resources and Development Department to renew the Anthem Blue Cross P P O plan offerings provided by the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, the Kaiser offerings as well, the traditional H M M O plan, and Jason will go on the rest of the detail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Jason Brick, County Minister of Officer, also here helping Human Resources and Development. On the line with me today, I do have Lupi Garza, Deputy Director for H R and D, and Tom Share, our consultant from Alliant, if the board has questions. I'm going to make my comments brief because most of the information is contained in the agenda item. Essentially, the H R and D staff, as well as the county's Health Plan Advisory Group, met in July and September, and they have reviewed the proposals along with our consultant, Alliant Insurance Services, and have agreed to, to the actions, the requests here before you today. The good news is, on September the 4th, the S J V I A board took action to decrease our health rates by 4.11% for the Anthem Blue Cross P P O plans. The rate, the recommended rate increase primarily came because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and there was a period of time that individuals did not, were not able to go to the doctor or do elective procedures. And so there's a thought amongst a lot of the health plan consultants that the rates may be sort of artificially decreasing because of that sort of blip on the radar with the early days of the pandemic. And so what we are proposing today is, through the assistance, through the help of our consultant, Tom Share, and I want to appreciate his help on this, that we are asking the board to adopt the same rates as last year. And then we will put the 4.11% savings that we don't pay to S J V I A in a special fund to potentially help us smooth out increases in future years. Because we're not really sure as. Because we're not really sure is 2020 going to be a normal year, is 2021 going to be a normal year? And that way, it buffers some of the potential wild fluctuations in the premiums that may come in a year or two. So we didn't want to cut people's rate by 4% and then raise them by, you know, a large number in the subsequent years if the claims data returns to somewhat of normal. For the Kaiser plans, there will be, there is approximately 200 employees enrolled in Kaiser. There will be an increase of 3.18% and a 3.05% for traditional deductible HMO plans, respectively. There will be no increase to the Kaiser Senior Advantage Plan, and there are no increases to our Delta Dental PPO Plan or HMO Plan, and there is no increase to our Vision Service Plan. The, I do want to note that the open enrollment period does begin on October 1st and runs through October 23rd. And before I open it up to comments by Lupi or Tom, I wanted to just give the Board an update on our 98.6 virtual primary care, that we have, we, this Board approved last year a two-year pilot contract, and that's where members of the SJVIA plans can go on a text-based application with a primary care physician. And I want to share that we have had, that program has been very successful so far to date. We started in January, and we have 951 visits as of yesterday. Our break-even point was 286 visits. So we far exceed our return on investment. Just a few quick data points, the average wait time is 6.6 minutes to get a doctor on the 98.6 app. And there's a survey that they asked, what would you have done if you didn't have access to 98.6? 31% of the people who were surveyed said they would have visited urgent care. Interesting, 14% said they would have done nothing. So 14% of the users actually did go online and use the service in lieu of doing nothing. And this is a service that is provided to the SJVIA policyholders who do not, and they do not have to pay a copay. So it is essentially a free service. So some good things happening with the 98.6. I believe Fresno County is looking at adding it next year, and so we've had some really good success with that. With that, I will ask Lupi or Tom if they have any, anything to add, or if I missed anything.
No, you covered it.
This is Tom Share. Yeah, this is Tom Share. I don't have anything to add. I think that was a great summary, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain any questions from the Board?
Just a quick comment that I will make. I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you to Tom and Lupi for all the work that you are doing on this. I think this is a great story here. There is uncertainty, and so I do think that setting any decrease that our employees would have seen aside and planning for any fluctuations in the future is a smart and prudent move. I do want to point out that for those employees who are on the family plan, that the county will continue to invest in that program to make the costs more palatable for employees. That is the highest-cost plan that we offer. But I do think that, as you can see, we're looking for innovative ways to improve access and decrease costs for our employees for care, whether it's the 98.6 plan that's saved our county employees about $25,000 just from the roughly 1,000 employees who have avoided a copayment by going through the 98.6 app, or the $100 increase in the county's contribution to the family plans. I think it just really says a lot about what this county is focusing on and investing in our employees and their health and well-being. So I think it's a great news story, and really am glad to see no increase for the vast majority of our plan holders here in the county. Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I'd like to echo all of that, and then, and especially being really creative, Mr. Britt, on the, on that 4.1%, on putting it in there to smooth out the future. Just one question I received from a constituent about Blue Shield Promise Plan for Medi-Cal Local Initiative. I don't know anything about that, and so I'm just asking if that plays into this at all. I know that we're looking at Anthem Blue Cross, this is Anthem, this is Blue Shield. Promise Plan for Medi-Cal Local Initiative. Any comment on that? Does that fit in with this discussion at all?
So that it does not fit with this discussion? We do have a contract with Blue Cross, our health human services agency, to do Medi-Cal managed care, so I'm not sure if they're...
That's probably the discussion. Okay, so we'll do that at all.
So that's a, that's a different, yeah. This is for our employees, the others are for the Medi-Cal recipient.
Thanks for the, thanks for that clarification.
All right. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you. This is, this has been discussed and vetted at the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority Board, and we approved at our last meeting, and I would be happy to move that we adopt this.
All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Crocker. Any public comment? Nope, no public comment. A second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, the most exciting item on our agenda here today, for all of you who have stuck around, will take up item 24, which is a request by the Auditor Controller to give a presentation regarding an overview of the department. Hello, Cass.
Happy birthday, Pete.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning. Grateful to be here and share with you the exciting work happening in the Auditor Controller, Treasurer, Collector Office. My goal in this presentation is to share some background of what we do, who we are, and what we've accomplished, and the wonderful endeavors that we are engaged in right now. I'm Cass Cook, the Auditor Controller, Treasurer, Collector. Simply put, we manage, collect, and safeguard the funds of the county. This is what we do, but it doesn't really begin to describe who we are. And I hope as we go through this presentation, you get a feel for the commitment to excellence that we have in our office. And in particular, my focus is comprised of really four points. What can we do to drive down costs? What can we do to increase revenues? How can we provide excellent customer service? And what can we do to improve our efficiencies? It is an engaging and worthwhile work. We are humbled by the trust that's placed within us, and we do take pride in the work we do produce. We are a unique office. Most counties have a, the Auditor Controller is divided from the Treasurer, Tax Collector. I feel that the combination here has worked well for us. Communication and collaboration across the department has been critical, and we continue to find ways to integrate the dark side with the light side. We are fortunate to have talented and forward-thinking employees on both sides. The only way that the combination of offices work is with a strong leadership at the next level. Particularly fortunate to work with Tara Freitas as the Assistant Auditor Controller and Paul San Pietro as the Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector. It is a wonderful feeling to be able to trust the people that you work with. We'll get into the responsibilities of our office in future slides. I did want to give a brief, kind of a history of where we came from and where we are. So back in 1970, there were about 21 employees per 100,000 people in the county in our office. Today, that's 11.27. I show that just to say, you know, economies of scale, we're able to do the work that's required for a much larger county with the employees we do have. And it's also goes to show you the power of technology. And in terms of our relationship to the total employees in the county, we've gone from 3% to 1%. And so we are a small department. I would say we're a very efficient department, and we continue to look for ways to improve our efficiencies without the need to increase employees. And what has made this possible over the years is it's really gone from a manual work of data entry to more analytical work. Through improvements of hardware and software and technologies, we're just able to do more. And also, so our employees have become more skilled and have greater capacity than previously. Just for a quick example, we currently have six CPAs in our department, and we have additional employees working on that certification. As well as on our treasurer's side, we have, I believe, two, possibly three certified investment officers. And I would point out, the budget approved last week included a net decrease of total employees in our department, and we expect more changes to come. The Auditor Controller Division, so this division, our department, it's led by the illustrious Tara Freitas. I'll briefly go into the good work that has been done in the division. Terms of financial reporting, we are responsible for the annual financial report, the federal grants report, general accounting for the county, audits, and the fraud hotline. I will note, this past year, we received 226 calls, 24 online submissions on the fraud hotline. These were primarily related to welfare fraud and some consumer fraud. So really, the purpose of the origination of the fraud hotline was internal fraud, but hey, if it works, it works. So we pass those calls on to the appropriate people, including the DA's office. We also do audits, risk audits, including this past year, we focused on payroll and disbursements. By law, we're required to do department head change audits, and then we look at cash shortages and overages. Recently, we've also been tasked with CARES Act monitoring and reporting. In this department, excuse me, we have focused on our efforts on streamlining our processes and then focus on, focusing on what's most impactful. We are auditors. We do have a job to do. We know that it can be daunting and time-consuming, so we try to make it, and we try to reduce the audit burden on departments. We've also placed greater emphasis on quality training. Recently, we also collaborated with the IT and the CAO's office on a countywide policies change. And for all employees' favorite, Payroll Division. We process payroll for the county in 12 special districts. That includes processing employee information and data, including direct deposit, federal and state withholdings, guard instruments, union deductions, manual warrants, repayment agreements, and W2s. So this is an ever-evolving process that has become more and more complex. We are currently, one of the, a side note here, we are currently renegotiating our contract with ADP, or payroll provider, to lower costs and increase capabilities, and that should come before the Board in the next few weeks. So we pay people, and we pay vendors. This just shows an increase of the amount of work being done by the Claims Division. I would note two things. This past few weeks, well, when the Board approved the, what is it, the grants for the small businesses, at first, we were a little weary of whether we'd be able to, let me back up. There's about 1,000 grants that went out, right? And, you know, printing 1,000 checks really is not that difficult, but getting them into the system can be. So we were a little worried about how that was going to happen, but the Claims Division really stepped up and did a wonderful job there. I would also like to thank Adam Peck and his crew, they were amazing to work with, and we were really pleased to see how that, well, that turned out. Another improvement made in the past year or two is we've gone from one check run to two check runs, and that has helped keep down, well, helps get the checks out quicker to the vendors so that we lower maybe late fees or things like that. Okay, we have an accounting system or a financial system. I've heard this referred to what's AFIN. I've heard it referred as a frustrating and inefficient nuisance. It's actually advantage financial, but our role here is to provide customer support to departments and to help mitigate this nuisance. And we also work with IT on the technology side with this. We have 345 AFIN users that we serve. That's the auditor side. On the tax collector side, it's led by the eminent Paul San Pietro. We collect, invest, and distribute funds here. Just some quick stats, over the years, collections increased as property values have increased. We've gone from a collection rate of 93% to 97%. We've increased the ways that we collect money through lockbox, through the mail, on the phone, in the lobby, in drop boxes, anything we can do. To note here, we do have an antiquated system that we're feverishly working to replace. It is really the backbone of what we do in the tax collection department. Unsecured business property, so this is, this, we do, we do do this. It's not a large part of what we do, but I did want to bring it up because we coordinate, it highlights our coordination with the assessor. We are fortunate to have a solid working relationship with the county assessor, and it makes a tremendous difference as we work with citizens of the county that we can speak with as close to one voice as possible. It's great to be able to rely on Roland and his team. I know, well, the Treasurer, Tax Collector, and Assessor do the conflicts of interest really, you know, we have to be separate. But when you're a taxpayer coming to pay your bill, it doesn't matter if you're going to the assessor or the tax collector, he just want to, he just want the help that you can get. So we try to minimize the inefficiencies or, and make it as easy on the taxpayer as TOT, we collect hotel tax. This has gone up. We've really focused on our efforts here. We've done a lot of detective work, and then recently, we've hired a vendor to assist us in finding those TOT hosts that we may have missed. We also handle property tax accounting and distribution. This is another complicated world with arcane rules. We also, in this department, includes a setting of the tax rates. The staff here are very knowledgeable, professional, and courteous, and just a great, great team. My last slide. Treasury. So I will just say, I've spent a lot of time on this division because, as I said in the beginning, we're focusing on lowering costs and raising revenues. This is where we have our greatest impact, so we put a lot of effort here. In the treasury, our, what's most important is, I may say, the return of investment instead of the return on investments. I like to compare it to the pension plan, where the pension plan is collecting and investing funds that will be paid out in 10, 20, 30 years from now. We collect funds and invest them that may be paid out in a week. So we need, we need our funds to be very liquid. It limits what we can invest in. The law also limits what we can invest in. We actively manage our investments from zero to one-year maturities, and then we work with PFM, who manages the investments that have a two- to five-year maturity, and it's worked out well. Our portfolio is about $1.6 to $1.7 billion. The other thing that we do, I don't have a slide for, is we do administer the deferred compensation or the defined contribution plan. So I've talked about a few of these, I just want to highlight a couple of things, and I'll be done. Right now, we're working on a banking transition that really should help improve our efficiencies, improve the customer service to us from the bank, and possibly reduce costs. Recently, we purchased hardware, a cash recycler, that will also improve our efficiencies and help us in the future really manage our resources better. We've spent a tremendous amount of time on cash flow analysis, and what allows us to do is put more money out into the, to the markets to get a return on our investments. We went from two... We went from two investment managers down to one, which was a big savings for us and also improved efficiencies. We've purchased a Bloomberg terminal, which gave us better information, so we get a better rate to return our investments and also lower our costs when dealing with brokers. On the audit side, we've really tried to simplify our process and really bring down the burden on departments. As I mentioned, we worked on the policies page, we had, we've gone to two times a week of check printing. And then audit side and payroll, we've really spent some time at the negotiating table. So we're doing banking right now, we're hopefully progressing on the tax system soon, we're looking to upgrade the payroll system, and then, so those are the things right now we're working on. Looking forward, one of our big projects is the ERP, the financial system to replace the nuisance that we do have. So as, as we're able to get some of these other things done, then we can turn our efforts back, back to that. So... It may not be exciting to some, but it's, I find it very rewarding. It's great to come to work and with the people in our office and just highly talented staff doing some great, great work. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to serve in this county.
Thank you for the presentation, Cass. I thought it was a great presentation, and you really covered a lot. I think it's important to point out, first of all, I can see the energy that you have and the passion that you have for what you do. I'm fortunate to represent this board on the Audit Committee, and so I get to work a little bit more closely with your staff. And you do a fantastic job, and, and it starts at the top and works all the way through the department, and you've got a lot of very dedicated employees that are committed to what you do, that do take enjoyment out of accounting and finance, and I, I think it's just great to see. So it's, it's wonderful to be able to have a diversity of jobs being offered throughout the county that afford residents an opportunity to do what they love and do great work for the county. I think it's also important to highlight the investments that you've made in technology and improving the overall efficiency of your office. That benefits not only you and your staff, but it also benefits the Tulare County taxpayer so that they are getting the best bang for their buck, and I appreciate your approach to handling customer service and inquiries from the public, working seamlessly across departments and knocking down barriers and silos that used to stand in the way of effective customer service. I know I deal with far fewer frustrated constituents who have interacted with your office because of the work that's been done. I also want to talk real quick on your, the treasury and the management over there with the finances and investment. You've done a great job. I mean, if you look at some of the various boards and commissions that we all serve on, they've chosen to keep their money invested with the treasury of Tulare County because of the strong management and the good return that you've been able to generate. You know, looking at the, one of the recent reports that I have in front of me, an effective rate of return of 2.91% during a highly volatile investment period, that's, that's very strong and says a lot about the work that you're doing. So I appreciate it. You've been a good financial manager and have been very willing to accommodate and work with the board, the CAO, and that's exactly what this county needs in that office. So I sure appreciate your work, Cass. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cass, another great riveting presentation. I just echo the comments about payroll upgrade, they're desperately needed. I think we've all experienced hiccups and challenges from time to time, and the more automation, I think will better serve our county from a fiscal standpoint, so continue on there. On the TOT slide, we, we know what COVID's done to tourism. So are those estimates as far as the fiscal year 1819 or 1920? What does that look like? What do we, have we received our numbers for the last, or is that on calendar year basis? What, how do we, how are we determining the 2019 and 2020 numbers?
2019's final numbers were approaching the 3 million. I mean, it didn't quite hit 3 million, but it...
And that is calendar year?
That's fiscal year.
Fiscal year. So 1819 or 1920?
1920.
So we did see a, an increase even with everything being shut down for the last quarter, more or less?
Yes.
Okay.
Going forward, I mean, it's terrible what's going on, people are suffering, it's going to have a significant impact on TOT revenue.
Right. And I, I mean, we've, I'm hearing stories about other regions that are, that have even a larger emphasis on tourism and what that's looking like. I mean, there's, I suppose, one small silver lining with the fires, or is that with almost 1,500 personnel from out of the area, that I know that they are taking up quite a bit of rooms as well as evacuees? So again, it's, it's terrible that we have to do that there, but I, I know that at least recently, over the last few weeks, that there are, I know, many hotels are seen, are at capacity.
If I may add one point to the TOT, in 1819, we collected from 298 separate entities or TOT pairs, and that increased in 1920 to 364. So it went from 298 to 364. So 364 is a large number, and it was a large...
Was that when you hired the outside firm?
So I don't have the exact number on the outside firm, but really, the bulk of the increase has come from the work that we've done internally. The outside may have, how do you remember?
It sounds like 50.
Okay. 50.
Very good. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Any further questions, comments? Thank you, appreciate the presentation, and always great to have you come before the board, Cass. Thanks a bunch. All right. Next, we're going to move on to item 25. During this portion, board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests today? Supervisor Valero?
All right. And this one will be somewhat lengthy, because I wanted to set the context before the ask. And then in addition to that, just want to give kudos to Kenneth, our intern, for helping me put this together. And this is the animal slaughter composting request. In the summer, when Tulare County experiences weather forecast of 100 degrees and above, dairy animals die at a quicker rate than usual. Tulare County only has one agency that deals with the pickup of animal carcasses. Thus, as the number of dying dairy animals increase, the county gets behind and is unable to keep up with demand. A local emergency was issued on August 19th by the county. With said emergency, dairies were notified of their options regarding deceased animals. The main option allowed dairies to compost animals and then take carcasses to landfills a few months later. The county issued notices of the new policy, however, dairies didn't respond and no responses were received. The act commissioner's office assumed that the rendering plant was able to retrieve all carcasses left laying across the county. Fortunately, the weather cooled off and the agency in charge of disposal was able to perform. However, this issue continues to occur. As we know, the composting process is complicated. Some dairies are allowed to do it on-site, others are not. Partial animal carcasses are much easier to compost than entire animals. Regularly, landfills are not allowed to accept carcasses as they require special handling, and they only do so during state of emergencies. The problem becomes challenging when carcasses are disposed of improperly. There have been instances where dead animals are disposed of on the sides of roads, in canals, and in orchards. People call the sheriff's office, but the office is unable to do so because that is not in their jurisdiction to do so, and this situation occurs year-round. Not only does it apply to dairy animals, but there are also calls for the disposal of sheep, horses, and goats. These kinds of animals are disposed of improperly as well. So here's where my request comes in. There is a dire need for a local incinerator for the disposal of large farm animals. It would be to the benefit of the county to have a dead hauler. Due to demand and increased request, providing such services would decrease animals disposed of in a timely and proper manner. The creation of a designated large-scale animal disposal service would alleviate the burden placed on animal services, Resource Management Agency, the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, the sheriff's office, and the Farm Bureau's office. Most importantly, it would ensure that animals are properly disposed of, which is a benefit to our community. At this time, I'd like to request that the Board of Supervisors charge the Agriculture Advisory Committee to take steps in working through this issue and present an item before the Board of Supervisors for possible approval.
Thank you for the concise request, Supervisor.
You're welcome.
Yep, we will take note of that. Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, just on, on that note, I don't actually have a request, I just forgot to mention something during the crop report that I wanted to mention. But on that request, I think for clarification, we don't actually deal with the dead carcasses as of right now, that's a private company that does. So, but I know that there has been interests to have some type of new facility that, that we could help out with horses. I know I've gotten phone calls about that. So, anyway, but I, I wanted to note on the crop report that last year, in 2019, there was, out of all of the forests that we have, and in light of what's going on right now with the SQF complex, $60,000 worth of timber was harvested, and that is just atrocious, how small that is. And I think it just gets to the point of why we're at where we're at.
Thank you for that comment. Council, do we have need for a closed session?
Yes, we do have need for a closed session. Items B, D, and E are off calendar, and the balance of the agenda will be heard in closed session, and I do anticipate an announcement now.
All right. The board will now adjourn to closed session. Stay healthy and safe. Thank you for participating in today's meeting.
Jennifer Flores, Chief Deputy County Counsel, reporting out for item A. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend and tender defense to applicant's counsel in the case of Alpa Irrigation District, the County of Tulare et al., Fresno County Superior Court, case number 20CECG02606. The adverse party is the Alpa Irrigation District. This case involves a challenge to the county's adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for permit number PSP19-083 under the California Environmental Quality Act. The vote was made upon motion of Supervisor Dennis Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Kyler Crocker. Jennifer Flores, reporting out for item F. The Board of Supervisors took action in a personnel matter to appoint Brooke Sisk in the position of General Services Agency Director. The vote was made upon motion of Supervisor Eddie Valero, seconded by Supervisor Amy Shuklian, and was approved 4 to 1. Reporting out for item G. The Board of Supervisors took action in a personnel matter to appoint Alicia Balderez in the position of Board Representative 1. The vote was made upon motion of Supervisor Dennis Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Eddie Valero, and was approved 5 to 0.